And I say working, they're finalizing, they're kicking them in the system right now. We're hoping to have that in the next two or three weeks, have that finished. And then our goal is to have our reviews done by the end of February. Once we do that, then we will send value change notices to everybody that owns property in Wayne County. Everybody will get one of those, a value change notice. It will tell you what your new 2025 market value, market and tax value is at that time. That will make everybody so happy, believe me. They will look at that and say, you're crazy. There's no way I could sell my house for this. But, so we're trying to educate. This is excellent way to get the word out. Sam's helped us out with that as well with the New Yorkers. We're trying to do this out. Our, we have a, Joel Gillis is going to help us with that as well. So we're trying to get the word out that, you know, everybody associates that value increase with a tax increase. That's not really true. This is a two-pronged thing. Our job is to put the value on it. That's strictly our job, period. We're done. We pass it to the council, to the commissioners, to other towns. It's their job to analyze that, look at their budgets, and adjust it accordingly, adjust that tax rate accordingly to fit their budgets. So it's a two-part. The value times the rate gives us that tax bill that people associate, that people get in the summertime. So that, that's what everybody's concerned about, is that tax bill going up. So we're going to try to educate as much as we can, talk to people like we're doing here today. I ask you to do the same thing. I try to tell people, you know, if you look at it from the other side, take the tax paying bill out of it, what other investment can you, have you put your money in that's had to return this had in the last four years? There's not many bank accounts that's going to pay you that kind of return on what you've done. So if you've got real estate right now, it's a great investment. And, and the markets reflected that. So right now, we're doing really good on in that. So if you think about it that way, and I try to tell people too, you know, think of me as a banker appraiser. You're trying to get equity loan on your house, you want me to appraise your house. You want it high as you can get it, right? If you talk to the tax man, oh, my house ain't worth nothing, it's falling down, it's not worth anything. So it's like a double-edged sword there, depending who you're talking to. So let me see, I made some notes just to make sure, keep me on track. Because I tend to get excited about this and go to rambling. Let's see. I think I've said everything except what you want me to say. How much is it going up, right? That's the, that's the magic, that's the magic number. Like I said, we're not complete yet. We are almost there, but we're, we're not completely. I can't give you a magic number. What I can give you is probably an educated range that I'm looking at, we're looking at right now. The reason we're not, I'm hesitant about giving out anything is because we have to finish number one with that commercial stuff. We have to review, stuff changes. We have to go through our appeal process. And, you know, we, we did sixty-some thousand parcels of land here. We're not perfect. We make mistakes. I mean, we look at exterior of homes, there may be something inside the house we were unaware of. They might have some leaking, some termites, we don't, we don't know. That's what the appeal process does, is bring that out. We have to adjust those, adjust those values. We go out and review it, take a look at it. If we feel like it's warranted, we will adjust the values. So we have to go through that process. On top of that, we have our deductions, our elderly exemptions, our disabled exemptions, our veterans exemptions. Those will be being worked all during that too, and that actually reduces those values too. So anything that reduces those values, we've got to go through that. So this is going to be an ongoing process. We're going to, I'm going to give you some, a range today. We're going to be working closely with Matt and Catherine the next several upcoming months, and hopefully by April, May, when y'all get ready to start thinking about that actual tax rate, we're going to have some, probably a good firm number for you, hopefully. But for right now, I ran some reports this morning just to get that final, final number before I came over here. Right now, we're looking probably between forty-five and sixty percent increase in value. And when I say increase in value, don't take your, don't take your bill and say, it's going to this much. That's the big pot of money. That's taking last year's total valuation and 2025 total valuation. And that's the change. That's the change we're looking at right now. What does that mean? That's the average. That means some will be less, that means some will be more. That'll be, some will be right around that thing. But right now, from 2019, this is not a one-year change. People confuse that. They say my taxes, my bill went up one year. It's not. It's from 2019. Just to put that in perspective, Johnston County just finished theirs. They're about a month ahead of us. They just sent their notices out. They said they went up about seventy percent. And they did the same one in 2019 that we did. Of course, they're a little closer to Raleigh, which is explaining that too. So right now, that's the best I can give you, I'm willing to give you, is that range from forty, forty-five percent up to about sixty percent. Somewhere in there is where we're going to fall, it looks like. It's going to be a shocker. People are going to be, look at that and say, wow. But I will, I will leave you with this before I answer questions. We, the tax office, the commissioners, the council, we don't set these values. All we do is reflect the market. People buying and selling properties is what, is what sets the market. And we just reflect that in our valuation like we're required to do by state law. And that's, that's very simply put, I know, but that's the facts. So now that I've hit you with that, questions?
Floridians, y'all, you know.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Questions?
Just a comment. When you were here last year, you said that you thought, and understand that it might be thirty, thirty-five. And so I was expecting you to say, well, it wasn't quite that high, not the other direction. Holy smoke.
I'm glad you brought that up, because when I said that thirty-five percent, I knew it was going to come back to bite me. That was not my looking forward, thirty-five percent. That was what was actually happening right then.
At that time.
At that time. And that was looking at our sales ratio from the 2023 sales ratio. At that time, we were around thirty-five percent low in that sales ratio that I mentioned about comparing tax value and, and market value. When I presented last year, it was in February, I think. That was using twenty-three's sales ratios. So sales during twenty-three compared to tax value, right then was around thirty-five percent. That was not my prediction for 2025.
So one year's time, it jumped the rest of that?
Potentially, potentially. And it, it's a random sampling of sales. When they send us this thing, the state sends us, sends us a random, random sampling, there's probably four to five hundred sales in that random sampling, because it just depends on what they're hitting. And it, you know, it could have been heavier on residential versus commercial, it, you know, I just don't know. I don't know what it was, but that's, that's what it was.
I might have some for sale.
Do what?
Said I might have some for sale.
There you go.
Can you give us at any point, even if it's not today, can you give us some data on individual neighborhoods, or what parts of town you're seeing the biggest increases and the biggest sales, sales ratios and things like that? Or is it, or is the, is it painted with a broader brush than that?
The master appraisal is a little broader than that. I can do it to a certain extent. We have neighborhoods designated, but they're huge neighborhoods. They're not really small pieces. But I, I did want to touch on one thing I think I wanted to mention. This is going to play more into Catherine, this revenue neutral thing. I want to go and talk about that, what, when we get that out there. So Catherine's going to present something to you tomorrow, possibly on that, dig board tonight, this afternoon sometime. The revenue neutral, several years ago, the legislature also passed that we have to advertise a revenue neutral rate when we do a reappraisal. You have to advertise it. You don't have to adopt it, you have to advertise it. What the revenue neutral does, it takes last year's big part of, big valuation, compares to the new re, total reevaluation, to total value. And it says, what rate will it take to get this big pot back down to what you had last year? So that, that's what a revenue neutral is. It's, it's trying to get this new pot of valuation down to what you had last year, and advertise that. Again, it does not mean you have to adopt that, it just has to be advertised as such. So I just want to make sure everybody touched on that, and I'm sure Catherine's got a whole lot more details than I can have on that. So, sorry about, sorry to interject. Questions?
Other questions?
Just a question. Do you have, Mayor asked about neighborhoods, but how about sectors? Do you have an idea which is fastest growing, residential, commercial, industrial?
Residential right now. In Wayne County, residential is our, is our, is our big thing. We, we have, our commercials getting better. You see the while wash popping up and the car wash is popping up, but it's kind of, but industrial, I'm glad I came behind the development thing, because we, we need some good industry. And the industry brings lots of revenue. One, one good industry is a whole neighborhood worth of revenue, not only the real estate, but the business personal property they bring in when they do it, with equipment and stuff like that. So industry would be great, and we're sort of low on that, just Alan's opinion. Our industry needs, needs to beef up some, but right now, residential sort of drives the, drives the stuff for us.
Thank you.
Well, I say residential and Duke Energy. Our plant here, we do have a public service plant, Duke Energy, and they, they're a big, they're one of our largest taxpayers.
Other questions?
I didn't do that good, y'all, come on.
When, when do you anticipate being able to give our finance department, Ms. Gwen, what she needs to be able to come up with a revenue neutral for us?
Like I said, we're going to try to get notices out in February, go through the appeal process. I mean, I'm thinking April-ish, maybe?
Okay.
April, maybe, and don't hold me to that. I mean, I think I will feel a lot better in April, once they go through the appeals and our exemption applications and stuff like that. I think I would feel a lot better to give something out like that.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Notice is will go out in February. Just for those who are watching from home, can you just share what an appeal process looks like?
Surely. Good, excellent question. Thank you. It's going to be a pretty big form, it's going to ask specific questions about your property. We're going, we're going to show you what the new value is, and it's going to ask you, if you want to appeal, it's going to give you options like, have you recently purchased a property? What did you purchase it for? Is there something wrong with your property? Like I mentioned, is there some damage done to the house that we wouldn't know about? Something like that. Do you have a neighbor's house that sold that's comparable to yours, that sold for less than what we have yours valued at? And I, I use the word comparable, because people tend to say, well, my neighbor's house sold for this, and you got mine at this. Well, we're looking at, well, you've got five hundred more square feet than they do. And they don't think about that. So I, that's why I say comparable. On the, so anything, if you want to appeal, you have to let us know why you're appealing. Why do you feel like this is not a good value? And I, I just challenge people, there's so much readily information available today online, Zillow, Realtor, every, there's so much stuff online that shows, you can look in our website of stuff that's sold. If you know your neighbor's house sold down, down the road, it's public information, you can look it up, see what it sold for. So I just challenge people to educate themselves. But on the commercial side, we ask, if it's income-producing property, we ask for income and expenses for the past three years on that form as well. So anything you can provide, if you had a, if you've just recently refinanced and you have a new appraisal that disputes what we have, let us look at it. It may be something as simple as we have a square footage wrong, or something like that, possibly. So anything you can provide to us with that appeal would help the situation. And what I want to say is, and it says on the form, you, if you just put on there, too high, that don't, that's not an appeal. But believe it or not, we get a lot of those. Either too high, or can't sell for this amount, or all kinds of stuff with nothing to back it up. And we, we just can't do that. I will say, once we go through, what we're doing now, what we'd be doing then is informal appeals, that comes back to us, we work those, we go out and look at the properties, we try to, if a chain is warranted, we do it. We notify the person. If they're still not satisfied, the next step is, they go to the Board of Commissioners, who sits as our Board of Equalization and Review. They get to go to present their case to them. If they get, still get shot down, they're not, don't agree with that, there's also a state Board of, Board of Equalization Review they can go to. So it's, it's not just us. It can go on up the chain, and there's, there's other avenues. So it doesn't start with us. But hopefully, if something wrong, we're going, we're going to take care of it. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, you spoke about two forms for the veterans.
Mm-hmm.
And there's one for the senior citizens, which will help with their, reducing their tax rate. Will that change because of cost of living? You know, I think it was like, less than thirty-five thousand, I think. Is that going to decrease?
What, what happens with that is, that's, thank you for bringing that, that's, I want, the veterans exemption, if you're a one-hundred percent honorably discharged veteran, and you own and reside in your own home, there is no income limit tied to that one. But there is a certification you have to get from the Veteran VA Office for that. And what that one does currently, it takes your taxable value and reduces it by forty-five thousand dollars. It's, it takes your value, if you, if you have a hundred thousand dollar house, it takes forty-five thousand off, you pay on fifty-five thousand dollar value. That's, that's the current veterans, what is in place right now. The elderly disabled one, if you're not a veteran, you're elderly or disabled, hundred percent disabled, that one has an income limit tied to it. Your income cannot exceed thirty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. That's your household income. If you're married, it's both incomes combined. Alan don't agree with that, but he didn't write the bill. I think it should be more for a married couple, and hopefully they're working on that, hopefully. But right now, it's thirty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars if you made less than that last year during 2024, and you apply. What that one does, it takes twenty-five thousand, or half the value, off of your property value. So it's twenty-five thousand or half, it reduces that. We have a lot of people in this program, we have, we have a bunch coming in right now. The time to apply for that is between January first and June first. That's the time to apply for that in our office. And we do require part of the application process is, if you file income taxes, wait till you get those done, attach a copy with it, with your application, so we can verify the income. Some people don't have to file income taxes, if their income is a certain amount, they have to provide their ten ninety-nines they receive from social security. Any income they receive, the ten ninety-nines, they have to attach that to the application to prove the income part of that. Is that the answer?
Yes, it did.
Yes, ma'am?
And I am just so thankful for that, because a lot of the citizens in my district have utilized that.
It, it's, it's an excellent program, especially for people on, just getting social security, it's an excellent program for that. And we, I will tell you, our association, our accessory association, is working with the state. We're trying to get that revamped some, because it is, it hadn't, it hasn't kept up with the pace of inflation, in my, in our opinion. And so we're trying to work with legislators on that, hopefully try to revamp it a little bit, make it a little more, for people, more people can possibly get in on that. So maybe that.
And I'm just trying to get the word out even more.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, definitely. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Can that form that you guys was talking about, is it found online, or do they have to come in the office?
It's online. It's at wangov.com. If you go there to Tax Departments, and it's, on the left-hand side, it has forms. Thank you for asking, it's excellent. And, or we can have them at our office, either one, we'll mail them to you, whichever is convenient.
Does something go out to let people know that these programs exist?
We're required to list, we just got through our listing, it's in the New Yorkers, we did it three times, we have to advertise three times each year during our listing period. And it tells on there about that as well in, in paper. Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir?
And our veterans can go to the same place and get the form.
Yes, sir. You certainly can, for the veterans, there's one extra form for that one, and like I said, it's a one-page form that has to be filled out at the local veterans office on Ash Street. Amy Smith down there will be glad to help you out with that part of it.
Okay. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all, appreciate it. Yes, sir, Matt, thank you.
We're going to transition into our next item, which is financial modeling and debt service, and Ms., go ahead.
Mr. Cole, if I could, real quick, did you want to have a conversation about the agenda real quick?
Okay, go ahead.
So to kind of make it give some more flexibility in the agenda, looking at possibly the words some choose to approve.
And Brad, you mind blabbing up Matt real quick?
Yeah, give me a second, I lost my connection, sorry.
All right.
Keep going. All right.
So there we go.
Got it.
We'd like to move the ones for nonprofit and other agency funding discussion that we have for Friday, move those, and also code enforcement that we have for Friday morning, move those to this afternoon, so that we can bring MAG in here tomorrow at nine, and do those sessions on the pain class and the Ford study.
And have you discussed that with each of the impacted folks, including?
I, I have. Our staff is ready, after I spoke with Councilwoman Weeks about that, and is the rest of the board, if they're satisfied, we can move it.
Councilwoman Weeks, obviously you graciously said that if we were, you were completely fine with us moving along, but out of respect for you and your constituents, is this something that you would like to, to request?
I would love to be here. But, you know, I am totally at the mercy of the rest of the council.
It sounds like we haven't worked out, if we can have a motion to approve the changes as discussed by Mr. Livingston to the agenda, then we can amend the agenda.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion is made and properly seconded to amend the agenda, as the business board today, as discussed by Mr. Livingston, moving those, swapping to the different things. Would you please restate just for the record?
Sure. So we're talking about the nonprofit and other agency funding that's scheduled for tomorrow, and the code enforcement currents, concerns and priorities, those would be shifted to this afternoon around three-thirty, and for the remainder of the day.
All right. So motion is made, properly seconded, it's been restated for the record. You clear on what it is, we'll be able to reprint it tomorrow or something. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, same sign. All right, motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Go ahead, please.
Go ahead. Now, Mr. Cole. Thank you for being here.
All right, well, good afternoon. There's some hard copies of this presentation coming around that is exactly what will be up on the screen.
Mr. Cole, I'll ask while we're, while we're in a brief pause here, we were able to hear from you at a council meeting, I guess it was last month or month before?
Correct, yep, December.
Is a lot of this, are any significant revisions from that, or much of it is going to be consistent with what?
Very consistent, streamlined a little bit, but basically the same information and the same discussion points, so.
Is there, can you give us any guidance, just briefly? The process for reinstating that second bond rating? Well, I know we don't need it per se, but it's one of those things, it's just a, a thing that you want to have resolved.
Sure, yes, the.
What does that look like?
Yep, the Moody's rating that was withdrawn, we can start that process anytime. Now that, you know, all the audits are in place, they're current, that goes a long way to giving the rating agencies what they need, Moody's in particular. You have the S and P rating, that, that never was withdrawn. So the process is just reaching out to them, say, we'd like to reinstate the rating, and we go through a process where we have a phone call with them. They do their review, their internal analysis, a number of things that they look at. They look at audits, they look at budget, they look at census data, they do comparisons to other cities and towns in North Carolina nationally, and then they would provide us with a confidential rating, and we can make a determination to make that public from start to finish, from the phone call to the end of the process is about a month.
Okay.
So something we can start at any time, and we've talked about doing that with staff.
All right.
Okay?
If you would, go ahead.
All right, yeah, thank you all for, for having me back. I've presented at this retreat for many years, and always look forward to it. As was asked a moment ago, all of this information in this packet is virtually identical to what I presented in December, but it is streamlined a little bit. So hopefully, second go-rounds, anything that wasn't quite clear will make a little more sense. Everything on the screen is exactly what you folks have in front of you, there are page numbers in the bottom right corner. I'm going to get through, this is our, our table of contents. There's things in the appendix that I'm not going to go through, but it might be reference material for you all going forward. I'm going to go through that third item, existing tax-supported debt, and stop. Octavius is going to come up and set up the capital planning discussion, and then I'm going to pick back up and finish. So that's the, the format, and I'm happy to take questions as we go, if there's anything you'd like to discuss. So, and I realize the agenda page numbers are a little different than the page numbers in my book, so bear with me. Credit ratings, we were just discussion, discussing rather, right now, the city is rated by Standard and Poor's, you're a double A rating, and you can see on the left-hand side, you are a couple notches away from triple A, which is the highest rating that any government entity can achieve. And we would hope, over time, that we can improve that rating. And we have discussed with staff reinstating that Moody's rating on the left. You had previously been rated by them at the double A two level, so right on par with Standard and Poor's. But there's a, a process to go through to get that reinstated, and, and we're working through that process with staff. The right-hand side, just briefly setting up some comparisons, we, we have access to a lot of detail from Moody's. So on the right-hand side, we are going to show you some comparisons along the way to other cities and towns that are rated nationally, triple A, double A, and single A. They, Moody's rates about nineteen-hundred cities and towns nationally at those three different rating levels. And then within North Carolina, triple A, double A, single A, there's about thirty-nine cities and towns that are rated, and you can see who they are. And, and what I would say is, that middle group, the North Carolina double As, those are really your rating peers. They're rated in the same approximate range as you all. They may be in completely different parts of the state, they might be larger or smaller, but from a rating perspective, those are your rating peers. So, couple of slides on general fund operations and fund balance. And we do go through FY24, as I said, all of that is caught up. On the left-hand side here, we're restating your policy. You have a, a policy today with unassigned fund balance, it's been in place for a number of years, that you have a target to have that equal to fifteen percent of your budget, with a minimum of ten percent. So on the graph on the right, the red line is the minimum, ten percent. The gold line is the target of fifteen. And, excuse me, you can see, since 2021, you've been at or above your policy and, and growing. So you've got a good policy. We have discussed with staff that there may be a merit to increasing the fund balance level, increasing those percentages, so to hold yourself to a higher level of reserves. But you can also note in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, your actual reserves are higher than your policy. So there may be some common ground to find where we can improve that policy to a higher level, without impacting anything that you're doing on your budgets or finances. But you're in compliance, and, and have been for a number of years, and just all of these things have fallen into a place with a lot of hard work, between getting the finance reporting as current as possible, and, and growing fund balances over that period of time.
So, Mr. Cole, before you leave that slide, your bottom bullet discusses that your recommendation is that council consider amending its policy to make twenty percent the floor.
Twenty percent would be the target, with fifteen is the floor. So we'd be shifting up five percent.
Okay.
So ten floor now would go to potentially fifteen, and the fifteen target would potentially go to twenty. And you can see, you are, you know, close to forty percent. That dark green line on the far right of the chart, that's at about forty percent. So if we were to consider taking that to twenty percent target, you would almost be twice that new policy. And, and again, nothing wrong, obviously, with being above your policy in this case. Higher is better. Many local governments are outperforming their policy. But at, while you have your reserves at that level, you've built them over the years, it just may be a good opportunity to strengthen that policy.
We, we would hate to fall into a situation, and we'll play devil's advocate for half a second, then I'm going to give the floor back. We would hate to fall in a situation where we had to expend money out of our fund balance, And the only strike against that decision would be that we fell underneath our own policy, even though we had just raised that number. And then throw a flag that now we're outside of our own policy because we just made life harder.
Right.
Talk to me about the risk management side of that, because I love the appearance of raising the policy and saying that we're going to guarantee that we have a stronger, we're more fiscally responsible, we have a stronger savings account, all those things. But I don't want it to bite us in the you-know-what.
Right.
Should we actually have to use this fund?
Yeah, that's a very good point, and you're right. In a vacuum, just finishing FY '24, you could say, hey, we could raise that policy and be okay. But to your point, we also want to be mindful of what's coming in the years to come, right? Is there an anticipated need to use fund balance? An anticipated opportunity to use fund balance? And remember, the floor, I mean, you don't have to hit the target. You can still be in compliance with your policy if you're at the floor. Also, the policy has always stated, if something were to occur, and I call it good or bad. So bad, there's a storm and you have to front a bunch of money for FEMA, you've done that before, and you've got to spend reserves to do that while you're waiting for the reimbursements. That would be a bad event. A good event may be, hey, here's an opportunity to buy a piece of property or something else that's strategic. If either of those events were to occur, and the spending of those reserves would bring you below your policy, that in and of itself is not a violation, because the policy says, we're able to do that at the council's discretion. We make an informed decision when that situation presents itself. And at the time of doing that, we commit to bring it back into compliance within a certain period of time. Maybe it's two budget cycles. So you're absolutely right. I don't think we would want you to amend that policy without some discussion about what's headed our way in terms of operating budgets and capital budgets. Is there an amount of fund balance that we might think we would spend? And let's be sure that whatever the new policy is facilitates the ability to do that.
Thank you.
So we wouldn't just do that in a vacuum. Okay. Last section before I turn it over to Octavius, and then, as I said, I'm going to pick back up. Just the baseline of your existing tax-supported debt. No utility debt in here. This is city government-type debt. There's a utility discussion coming your way. The amount of debt outstanding is about 21.8 million. Those are bonds and loans that you'd issued over time for lots of different purposes. And you can see graphically that your annual payments, each bar is a fiscal year. The dark green portion is the principal payment, the light green is the interest. So in fiscal '25, the year we're in, in the far upper-left corner, the tax-supported debt service paid for all the loans together is about $4 million. And then you can see it steps down. All of this debt is fixed rate, so none of it's going to change, it's not variable rate debt. And we know the payments to the penny, as shown on the right-hand side, by fiscal year. Principal, interest, and total. And we know it to the penny for each loan that makes up this summary. And the only reason those debt payments would change is if you proactively paid something off or paid it down. It's not going to change based on the economy or anything else. And the nice thing, setting up a little bit with that debt profile, is you have declines every year or in most years. And that is setting you up for an opportunity to talk about new debt in the CIP discussion. It won't necessarily cover everything you want to do, but it does give you some reduced annual payments that could be replaced with new debt if you all decide that's an appropriate thing to do for whatever project is of the highest priority. The very far right column is 10-year payout. What that's measuring in a percentage, with a higher percentage being better, the highest you can get is 100. You're at 91%. It's saying, 10 years from now, if you make all of those payments as scheduled, 91% of that debt will have been paid back. That's really good. It means you're paying back your debt quickly, you're not backloading it. And all of this goes to, it's going to help you have some greater latitude and flexibility for funding capital going forward as you all determine is appropriate. Again, you're going to go through projects, amounts, and timing, and you're going to prioritize things. And this debt profile is an important part of that discussion. Okay, last slide before I turn it over. This is tying back to some existing debt policies that you have. These are in place. And on the left-hand side is that payout ratio. So the green bar is Goldsboro, it's at 91%. The red line says, we don't, that's where you do not want to drop below the red line, that's 55%. So for this policy, higher is better. You want a higher percentage, so being above the red line is the right place to be, and you are, and then some, right? You're well above it, that's good. The one in the middle is the debt outstanding, that roughly $21 million as a percent of your tax base, which is over 2.5 billion. And it sounds like it's growing with the revaluation, right? The values are what's going to go up. Lower is better for that one. Your policy says we don't want to go above 2%. You're less than 1%. So lower is better, you're in compliance. And then finally, same concept, lower is better. This one is your annual payment, $4 million this year for all of your tax-supported debt. As a percent of your budget, you're under 10%. So the two, the middle and the one on the right, you want to be below the red line, and you are. And that takeaway, I think, for y'all, as we start thinking about capital, is, one, you have an overused debt in the past. You have debt outstanding, but you have a reasonable amount of debt outstanding. And because you're both, you're in compliance, well in compliance with all of your policies, you can be comfortable that the city has debt capacity. Meaning, the idea of possibly issuing debt in the future for capital is a very reasonable conversation. Doesn't mean you should do it, it doesn't mean you will do it, but it's a very reasonable conversation. You don't need to feel like, hey, we've got too much debt, we can't issue more debt. From a capacity point, like on paper, I've got the ability to get this loan, you haven't. Doesn't mean it's affordable, right? How do you repay it? That's going to be a second part of the discussion. But the city has debt capacity, which I think sets up nicely what Octavius is going to introduce, which is a capital improvement plan and program. I'm happy if there's a question or anything at this stage.
Just a quick question, and this probably is from Matt. But is, just general thought here. It's a good thing that our fund balance is, we're bulking up our fund balance. It shows that we're fiscally responsible, and those before us were. But would it be accurate to assume that part of the reason that our fund balance was able to grow was because we were locked down behind on audits and not doing, following our CIP so far as replacing equipment and spending money on the things that we would have normally spent money on? Just a thought, I mean, a question, general question.
I'd say partially, I wouldn't say it was substantially.
Okay.
And, you know, we really haven't had a detailed CIP, so it's been sort of ad hoc, the way we've been going.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't want to lull myself or anyone else into false hope that there's money laying around, so.
I mean, traditionally, the city's had debt service into, to purchase things through, you know, replacement of capital, and that's been in place, but then we weren't able to do that. So it did alleviate, you know, the need to, it didn't alleviate the need to replace equipment, but it did mean that we didn't, we weren't able to borrow money. So it was, it's partially the reason, but it's also because we've been, you know, reducing our expenditures quite a bit. And Catherine can answer that question, but that's, that's the bigger part of it, has been reducing expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any others?
Other questions? Nope, all right.
Thank you, Ted. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, staff. I'm excited to be before you today, because this is the first capital improvement plan that the city has had. And we started building this foundation, this platform for the city's foundation in the fall of 2024. Our business tool that we use is a performance management software. And participating department heads, their projects began, began with projects that value at $50,000 or above towards their project. We had a vetting process, and the idea behind the vetting process is we take a capital plan in which we traditionally had a wish list. Department heads would submit projects that they hoped to get funded. Some would get funded, some would not. So what this does is stabilizes our plan, our capital plan. These projects that are for your consideration are projects that have been vetted by the department head, myself, and city management. So when we look at this, and we look at the criteria and the priority list, we look at a, initially, the department has looked at a 10-year window, a 10-year capital plan. And then when I look at it and the city management looks at it, it reduces to a five-year. What you'll see, and Ted will elaborate on, is in the appendix are A, funding level projects, B, and C. So you'll see the entire scope of the projects that were presented. Again, I say the importance of understanding the platform or the foundation for establishing this plan is important, because you see where we, where we are and where we will become. Today, the capital plan is a 10 to 20-page document. Tomorrow, it will be a 100-plus-page document. So we have room to grow. In addition, we'll add implement policies, as the city manager has already, vehicle, equipment, replacement policy. We don't have that, we're not actively pursuing that policy because it was just established. So we have a lot of good stuff coming before you for your consideration in the very near future. So thank you for the opportunity to present the intro to the capital improvement plan. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, great. So that, with the backdrop, the setup, page 11 here, restates the approach that you all and your staff have adopted for the capital improvement plan. There are different priorities, there are different criteria on how projects get ranked. For, in the bottom right, priority categories are high, medium, and low. And you can see what those mean or what you need, what a project needs to achieve to get one of those priorities. And then there's criteria categories. And so the bottom left is a matrix, right? The priority across the top, the criteria down below. And what that ends up demonstrating is there are projects that would be called Funding Level A, which is the higher priority, higher criteria. Funding Level B, which is mid-range, and Funding Level C, which is, you know, lower consideration, right? And it's a function of priority versus criteria. So in the appendix, you'll see all the projects that are currently categorized Funding Level A, B, and C. So you can get a sense of what's in there now by, by Funding Level. What we're going to present, and it's exactly what we presented to y'all in December, is just a plan, a forward look of how we manage the Funding Level A projects. Okay? So, when you look at page 12, across the top, we have a number of years that cover the CIP range. 2025, which is the year we're in, out to 2031. And you'll see on line four, which is highlighted in green, in the general fund, for Funding Level A, what the dollar amounts are in any given year. And the grand total is a little over $14 million. That currently are categorized as highest priority, highest criteria, Funding Level A. Then you can see directly below that how many projects or dollars are currently characterized as Funding Level B. It's about 40 million. And Funding Level C. So in the general fund, across all three funding levels, it's about 55 million there over the entire, what is that, seven-year window. Then we have the same thing for utility funds, stormwater, occupancy tax. Our conversation today is just on general fund and only the Funding Level A. Any question? The bottom right corner, I mean, as a city, as an organization, across all funding levels and all of these funds, with utility being the biggest part of it, there's a capital plan that's over $380 million worth of projects over the next seven years. That does not mean that's what's going to happen. Clearly, there will be annual discussions each year about prioritization and commitments. But order of magnitude, that's the level of capital investment that has been identified as needed or wanted over the next seven or so years. Okay. FY '25, rolling stock only. This is a project that is underway, a financing, I should say, that's underway. I'm going to round up, about 6 million, it could go a little bit north of that, 6.5 million. We're in the midst of soliciting funding proposals for that, and that is for equipment and rolling stock. Some of that is vehicles, equipment, some of it is heavier equipment and such. It's, it's going to be a combination of, of purchases that will be repaid over five years. Maybe some of it is repaid over 10 years, if it's expected to be in service a little longer. We've modeled it for today's purposes that all of it would be paid back in five years. I think in reality, when we come back to you all to discuss that borrowing specifically, you're going to see some of the purchases will be paid back over five years, and some of them will be paid back over 10 years. Again, commensurate with the period of time that that equipment is expected to be in service, right? We're clearly not going to do anything over 20 years, because it's not going to last that long. So it's five to 10 years. We've done it all over five years, which is a little more conservative. And again, I think we'll end up perhaps around the 6.5 million dollar level, just assessing some additional potential purchases. Today's presentation, not looking for any approvals, you all will have an opportunity through the normal course of the borrowing to look at the projects and approve the financing or at least consider approving the financing. Point we want to get across is if you were to do that, you could do that, and you will not jeopardize any of your ratios or your policies. You have enough room in all of those ratios and policies to take that level of funding on. That, that is not a consideration in my eyes at this point for moving forward. The capacity is there. The affordability, and this looks a little funky on the screen, so your book is probably the best place to look. Page 17 in the book, this you will remember from the, the work session, is the affordability model. That is, how do we pay for this? And we, we've included your existing debt that you're already paying. Remember that $4 million a year for the $21 million that's already in place? And then we've layered in the new debt that we'll be bringing forward for you all to consider. And then we've also identified what's in your budget, what dollars are currently budgeted in FY '25 to make those payments. That's what's in column G. The takeaway here is in the shaded brown, column L, is the additional dollars that will be needed on top of what you're already budgeting to repay the debt that we're proposing to issue. So a little over $700,000 in fiscal year '26, a little less than that in '27, and about $100,028. So on top of what's in column G, which is where you're already budgeting $4 million plus a year for your existing debt obligations, another 100 to 750,000 over the next three years would be needed to fund the existing plus the new. So order of magnitude on the affordability. And that, that will be part of your budget discussion in the coming weeks and months for fiscal '26 budget. So the capacity is there, have very high level of comfort that the lenders will show up when we ask for the proposals. We've had a pre-application call with the Local Government Commission, very straightforward. They didn't have any questions or concerns that they voiced, that was just the LGC staff. But it will go to the Local Government Commission. But everything should be in order, in my opinion. If, if there were a hiccup with the Local Government Commission, that would be a bit of a surprise at this point. I don't want to rule it out, but it would be a surprise. Okay. I'm going to go to scenario two, which builds on. I'm going to go to scenario two, which builds on scenario one. Remember, scenario one's just the near-term equipment and vehicles. Scenario two is where we fund those other projects that are Funding Level A in 2025, or excuse me, in the entire CIP. So remember, I said, general fund, $14 million. Much of that is front-loaded in fiscal '25 projects, in '26, '27, '28, that might, we'll take those all one year at a time, though, is modeling, is not only the debt I just discussed, but potential additional debt in the outer years of the CIP. You can see that a little bit more clearly on page 21. We're issuing about $10 million of debt, inclusive of the equipment that I just discussed, between fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '28. And you can see there on the right-hand side, rolling stock, IT, fire truck, pumper truck, radios, fire engine, computer replacements, fire engine. So it's a range of things that would fully fund that Funding Level A category. And the debt that we've identified to do that would be roughly that $10 million, not done all at once, done year by year, as needed and as approved. If you were to do that, again, your debt policies and your debt ratio-
Good shift, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Livingston, are y'all pretty confident that the number in Funding Level A for 2025 is pretty spot-on? You know, what's our degree of confidence right now on the numbers?
To answer your question more directly, as far as projects are locked stock-
Okay, okay.
As far as we are concerned, juggling the approval process for specific, your approval process for specific projects may vary. Because some of the project, A, funding projects may not get funded. B projects, Funding Level projects, may be funded, depending on the priority that you establish for all the projects.
Yeah, and I think, to my knowledge, really, the firmest thing that I've covered for y'all today on the capital plan is that $6 to $6.5 million of equipment and rolling stock that will be coming back to you all, us, in February.
And we've talked about a number of different lists of different projects and different pieces of equipment. Is there a more finalized version of all the, aware of all the different things that are going on?
Yes.
Aware of all the different things that are going on?
Yes, we have detailed lists by department, that's part of what the CIP is. Those Level A ones are mostly replacement of aged-out equipment, mostly replacement of aged-out equipment.
Gotcha.
If you take a look and look at the vehicles and the equipment we have, take a look at them, they're worn out.
Right.
Not only are they worn out, there's no systematic way of replacing any equipment. Now, our department heads have done an excellent job each year determining which specific vehicles to replace, or Public Works is that department that's often overlooked, but community is vital to this.
And department heads, because it's self-evident that we have fallen into the trap of deferred maintenance. And if you know a vehicle has an anticipated lifespan of 10 years, and you need to be saving a tenth of the replacement value of that vehicle per year, so that you can be in a position to replace at the end of that 10 years, and for a variety of reasons, that's not been an option or a choice, I'm not sure which, but where we are now is we're trying to make that choice. And I respect that, and I look forward to seeing all the different projects that are coming through. And again, the concept is what it is. So I get that, I'm looking forward to seeing different pieces of it.
And I would be remiss if I didn't thank you and the council for recognizing the need for our apparatus in the fire department, because that's, I mean, you got 20, 30-year vehicles that serve as engines on the street today, and replacing those is critical.
I had a question, looking at this and reviewing the rolling stock, and I definitely understand the need for apparatus. I've been researching Buy American a little bit, and compliance, vendor compliance and enforcement, and I just wanted you to educate me a little bit about how do we go about securing our vendors and make sure they're in compliance with Buy American and enforcement?
And you're talking specifically about-
Yes, sir.
The manufacturer of the vehicle or the equipment.
So what I am referencing is how do we go about getting our vendors for our apparatus, not specifically fire trucks, but other vehicles, and make sure that they're staying in compliance with, and, you know, Buy American enforcement?
So I'll, our procurement office, and basically, Tim Wood and Catherine kind of make sure that the vendors that we approve, whether it's a state contract, which is going to make sure that that's going to comply, or some other type of process that, or a vendor that has been vetted, their role is to do that. I don't know, Catherine, if you want to comment anymore on that, or?
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Okay, the chief's going to comment.
Yeah, I snuck up on you. Every truck we get has to follow NFPA standards. The manufacturer required to build to that standard, and we get them off of contracts, Sourcewell, and they have to follow that protocol as well.
Yes, sir. I think I'm referencing more like fleet vehicles.
Oh, okay. You said apparatus, so.
Yes, sir. I'm referencing more-
And we do the same thing with those as well.
Yeah.
Catherine, you want to take that, please? They can speak to these issues better than I can, so.
So, Ms. Week-
Great question, though.
Ms. Week, so your question is, is it specifically about like Buy American, or just procurement in general?
Procurement in general. How do we select our vendors? How do we, when it comes to fleet vehicles?
Okay, so we allow, and this comes from the way that the policy's written, we, the county, or the policy allows the departments to pick, you know, what type of vehicle. So we don't go out because, well, anyway, I'm not going to go down that road. So we don't say, well, you asked me for a four-door crew cab pickup truck, and then procurement goes and says, okay, well, I'm going to pick out a Dodge, or I'm going to pick out a Ford. It doesn't work like that. So the department knows what their needs are, the procurement policy allows them to suggest. Now, when they do their picking, now, it just, it depends on where it falls in the rules. If, let's say that we were going to, the Public Works, for instance, was going to buy 10 pickup trucks at one time, and that totaled the 10 pickup trucks was $500,000, well, that has to be formal bid. So we have to go by what the law says and what our policy, and our policy follows the law. So it just depends on what that circumstance is. If it's one pickup truck that a department, a small department like mine, in the meter services, one truck, so one truck is about $35,000, we look to find the best deal, the availability, we went on state contract, and that's how we purchased it. So we have those options, so we can formal bid, informal bid, we can do state contract, or a cooperative purchasing agreement, which has been vetted and been approved, so, as the chief said, like Sourcewell or something like that. Now, if you're asking specifically about, like, do we specifically say, well, we're only going to buy American, we do not have that in policy. Now, we do have some grants, like we had the Tiger grant, and that one had a Buy American requirement as one of the stipulations of us getting that six and a half, or was five million, but it was total six and a half million spent. And I can elaborate more if, but I just don't want to keep rambling on.
You're good.
Okay.
Other questions at this stage? So we've got through the modeling of debt service as well as CIP process, and we're actually running ahead. Almost 45 minutes. And I've been reminded that that's a good thing, so, that's good. I think we have, I'm going to suggest that we have David Hyder, are you here?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead and have that presentation on public utility rates, if you're okay, sir. I'm putting you on the spot.
Sure.
You've been put on the spot before, though, so you're good.
Perfect. All right, well, good afternoon. I'm Dave Hyder with Stan Tech. Pleasure to be here. We're going to talk about everybody's favorite topic, water and sewer rates today, so it should be exciting. I was here last year, and so we are using a similar format as last year, kind of give you a little bit of background, talk about our assumptions, then we'll go into some financial planning scenarios, look at some benchmarking, and then wrap up with a summary. Sorry, just catching my breath a second. You caught me off-guard.
Okay. Take it down, you're fine.
Sure. All right. So in terms of background and the approach that we use, our approach is looking out over a 10-year projection period, and we're using a financial model that we essentially develop revenue requirements over that 10-year projection period. And revenue requirements include a forecast of the system operating expenditures, so your day-to-day operations and maintenance of the system. It also includes any existing debt service that you have to pay off for prior capital investments, and then it includes capital investments that we have going forward. And that's the big topic today, are those significant capital improvement projects. So that forecast gives us a sense for the costs over the next 10 years, and then we compare that revenue requirements, those costs, with the anticipated revenues on the system. So the revenues come from your user rates, so your fixed charges, your consumption charges, and we forecast that over a 10-year period, looking at the current usage on the system, as well as any changes to that usage, whether people are going to use more or less water, as well as growth in the system. And that gives us a forecast of what our revenue is going to be on the system. And then we can compare those two and evaluate, are revenues sufficient to meet our revenue requirements? Are we meeting reserve requirements, target ranges for keeping cash on hand? And also, are we meeting some debt service coverage requirements, which are requirements as it pertains to debt that you've issued, as well as any future debt that you may be taking on in the system? Which is important as we talk about the capital improvement projects going forward. So that's the approach that we use. In terms of the assumptions, these are the assumptions we use for our starting points. We're using fiscal year '25 as our starting point, we're forecasting out over a 10-year period, so looking out until fiscal year '25. In terms of the beginning balance, when we closed out the fiscal year last year, beginning fiscal balance in 2025 is $33 million within the Water and Sewer Fund. So that's a good, significant cash balance, equivalent to about two years of your operating expenses, so that's a great place to start. That's built up over the last couple of years. We're using fiscal year '25 budget as our starting point, so those are the expenditures on the system. And then we look at each line item and forecast that forward. We're using a 3.5%, I'm sorry, 3.3% annual average inflation rate. You do have some debt on the system that you've issued in the past for capital improvement projects, the principal on that debt's about $24 million. But the last item is the significant one. You do have a significant capital improvement program for the water and sewer systems. Over the next 10 years, it's totaling about $487 million. That's made up of the projects that are shown here, there's two really significant ones. The first one's the $120 million for the 3.5 MGD wastewater treatment plant, which will take place over the next three years. We also have in the CIP, $220 million for a water treatment plant, $20 million for design in 2030, and then $200 million for construction in 2035. All of these items that I'm listed here are in today's dollars, but we do inflate them. So we're assuming that year-over-year, you're going to see about a 3% increase in cost, so it'll actually cost about $250 million for that new water treatment plant in 2035, when you factor in inflation. The majority of the capital improvement plan, particularly for the big capital projects, is assumed to be debt-funded, so that could be SRF, so state revolving loan funds, or revenue bonds on the system. And then the final item, I just want to mention, as I mentioned earlier, I was here last year, the CIP has increased substantially compared to last year, so last year, over the 10-year period, is about $288 million, now we're looking at that $487 million. So significant increases, I think it's just a more detailed and comprehensive CIP at this point. But to highlight the differences in the CIP, you can see here, just by major category, the differences in the 10-year CIP last year versus this year. So the water treatment plant in the last CIP was about $125 million. As I mentioned before, it's about $220 million in today's dollars, so close to $100 million difference there. Water treatment plant, about 18 million, wastewater treatment plant, about $18 million more than what was in the CIP last year. And then there's some projects, just that engineering projects related to the water and sewer systems, that weren't in the CIP last year, that are about $82 million more. So you add all that up, and that's the difference in the major projects comparing this year to last year. And because that's such a big driver, I just wanted to highlight those capital improvement plan projects. So, final item, just in terms of background, when we look at the financial plans, there are certain targets that we want to make sure we meet, to make sure you have a sustainable system, to make sure you can issue debt to support the capital projects. That includes, we want to maintain at least six months of annual operating expenses in cash, so as I mentioned earlier, you're well above that currently at 24 months. We want to make sure that our revenues and our expenditures are relatively in line, there may be some years where we're drawing down on our cash balances, and some years we're building up cash balances, but generally, we want to have revenues matching expenditures. And then as it pertains to debt service, we want to make sure we're meeting our debt service coverage requirements. So when we look at all of your debt, we want to make sure we're able to at least have one-time's coverage. And that just essentially means that your revenues, less your operating expenses, whatever's left over, you can pay your debt service, that would be 1-0 coverage. And then on your senior debt, which would be any revenue bonds in the system, want to make sure we have a minimum of 1-2-5 coverage. So that means that essentially, revenues, less your operating expenses, whatever's left over, has to be at least 25% higher than the senior debt on the system. And Ted can speak to that in detail, and it's really important as we look forward to issuing revenue bonds for some of these capital projects. So that's the background. Now I'm going to dive into some of the financial planning scenarios. And to do this, what we're essentially using is the financial model, this is, again, 10-year projection, and I wanted to start off with where we were last year. So this was the baseline projection that we provided last year. And just to kind of orient you in terms of what you're looking at here, up at the top, we've got the fiscal years, below that, we've got the proposed or suggested rate increases, so the water rate increase, the sewer rate increase. Then we have those two debt coverage requirements that I just mentioned, so your senior debt coverage, your all-in debt coverage. And then below that, yeah, below that here, we have our inside-city bill, so that's a typical residential customer's bill, using 5,000 gallons per month. And then finally, down in the below, we just have some of the outputs from the model. And so this first one is that cash balance within the operating fund. So we're starting with $33 million, we want to stay at that target line, which is six months. You can see how that changes over time. This middle chart here just shows our revenues versus our expenditures. So cash out is the orange line, cash in is the black line. Anytime our cash out is over our cash in, we're going to be eating into our cash balance, and vice versa. This is just the makeup of the expenses, so operating, cash-funded CIP is the light blue, and then debt service is the purple. And then finally, down here at the bottom, we just have our capital plan. So this is the CIP, annual spend in the CIP, this is how it's funded. Green is debt, I'm sorry, green is cash, purple is debt, and then this is just the assumed borrowing amounts. And so where we were last year, with the CIP as it stood, at $288 million, we proposed a 7% increase in water and sewer rates. And then given this capital plan, we were thinking about 10.5% would be required, given the size of these capital projects. That would allow us to meet our debt coverage, oops, that would allow us to meet our debt coverage pretty much every year, and allow us to maintain our cash balance. So with that stage set, I wanted to now bring it forward a year and include the capital improvement plan. So as I mentioned, we now have a capital improvement- So as I mentioned, we now have a capital improvement plan of $487 million. Obviously, more significant. What was adopted in fiscal year 2025 was 2% rate increases for water and sewer. And if we play this forward with 10.5% increases, given that new capital plan, given the 2% increase, essentially what we're showing is that we'd be short on our debt service coverage requirements. The years that are highlighted in red, we'd fall below those. We would use up all of the cash in the system and actually go negative by fiscal year 2030. So clearly not a sustainable plan. The reason, your cash out is above your cash in in just about every single year. So not a sustainable plan if we have that level of capital. So if we play that forward, we analyzed essentially, what does it look like if we do have that capital plan? We did the 2%. We're forecasting that in order to meet the targets, we would need about a 15% increase over the next five years. And then you could come off of that maybe 7%. But essentially, those would be required to maintain that cash balance in the near term and meet that debt service coverage requirement. And one of the big issues, as it pertains to this wastewater treatment plant, is in order to actually get the funding and to be able to borrow the amounts that would be required, we need to demonstrate that we have that level of cash and that we can meet that debt service coverage. So realizing these are significant increases, you can see how a customer's bill would change, given those 15%. We ran another scenario, which was, well, what if we get 20% grants for both the water treatment plant as well as the wastewater treatment plant? So shaving 20% off the top in terms of those capital costs. That would allow us to reduce the number of years that we would need to do the 15%. So we think you'd still need to do 15% the next three years. Then you could drop it to 11 and 7. Obviously, all of these are just projections we would analyze on an annual basis. But that would allow you to shorten the period in terms of when you'd need to do those 15% increases. And then we did another scenario, which was, well, what if we get grants? As well as what if we can move the wastewater treatment plant back? And essentially, that would give you more time to get revenues on the system up in a more gradual manner. So rather than having to do the 15% in the next three years, we're calculating about 12.5% over the next five years. The difference between these two scenarios, when you get to 2030, the typical customer bill is about $155. So if I go back one scenario real quick, before the delay, you'll notice that we're about the same place. We're just getting there quicker in terms of the increases. But if you were able to delay the treatment plant, it would allow you to have less significant increases in the near term. But again, that would allow you to meet your debt service coverage requirements, as well as the cash balances would be maintained. So what this looks like in terms of comparisons, current city of Goldsboro customer using 5,000 gallons for water and sewer per month is a little bit below the $89 average for the comparison communities. If you were to do the 15%, you'd see that would go up to about $99 in fiscal year '26. That would put you above the average. Important to note that this is somewhat of an apples-to-oranges comparison, because these are current rates. Most communities do increase their rates on an annual basis. And so it's likely that these other communities will have higher bills in fiscal year '26. But that would be where you'd end up with that 15% increase. So in conclusion, these are monumental projects that you're undertaking. And when you factor in inflation, we're looking at about over, you know, half a billion dollars over the next 10 years. So really significant increases in capital requirements. And water and sewer rate adjustments are required to make sure that you can secure the financing for those capital improvements. You need to maintain those cash balances, as well as meet that debt coverage. Do need to fund the ongoing operations. Make sure you can maintain the systems to allow for that sustainable operations. If you wait too much longer in terms of all of a sudden having to go to market to issue debt, that might become more problematic. And also, it would increase the increases we're talking about. So if we don't start increasing them, and we need to do these capital projects, we're going to look at even more significant increases in the future. But the level of the future rate adjustments are dependent upon the project timing and the cost of these projects. If they can be delayed, if you can get greater grants, obviously, that's going to reduce the increases that are required. But again, really, the drivers are the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, and then these engineering projects that I mentioned earlier. So with that, I would be happy to step back through any of the scenarios or take any questions that anybody may have at this point.
Any questions? And also, you will see on the agenda, there's a discussion about utility rates. Dave has talked about those and the impact associated with it. So now's a good time to have that discussion, too, as you ask your questions. Think about, once you see the rate increases, you see how it compares with the other jurisdictions. Is that a lot, or is it things enough? Is it justified, or are you aware of the requirements that we have adhered to moving forward in terms of the improvements? So keep that in mind as you, as we have this discussion about this one.
I think I saw a council employee at first.
Okay. Just a comment. I guess what really has leaped us forward, as we can see from the presentation, is now factoring in the, we're at the reality of the water treatment facility that's going to come into play. And I don't know if it's proper to say that it's good news that you're still in line with your peers, even though it's a significant increase. But the, for those of us that have been around for a while, I can remember many a city council meeting 20 years ago, when the late Mayor Allen now was speaking exactly to this, the need to start planning for the replacement of the water treatment plant. And I remember he kept saying, if you don't do something in 20 years, this is where we're going to be. And it's 20 years later, and here we are. So I don't see that we really have a choice so far as moving forward with the projects. Particularly if we want to grow as a community and be able to have the infrastructure to take on and assume that growth. I think that, I know some of our surrounding county and their neighbors, our neighbors, a lot of that need for infrastructure has just simply been driven by an unbelievable amount of residential growth. So I think that what you've presented here is spot-on. And, you know, that we had some discussion last year amongst council, trying to figure out what we were going to do with following the guideline of the recommended increases and incremental increases. And we, as a council, made a decision to step back from that a little bit last year. But I guess, no, we knew that, so to speak, that if we throttled back a little bit here, we're going to have to make it up there. But I appreciate the information, because we can't make a decision until it's staring us in the face sometimes. Thank you.
Other questions, Mayor?
I've been very consistent on my stance on our rates, including tax rate. We need to be competitive. I realize I'm looking at it from, any manager would say I'm looking at it from the wrong direction. I'm acknowledging that publicly right now. But I'll look at it as a cost comparison and a value comparison of if someone is trying to choose, where do you move? Where do you go put your business? Where do you go put your industry? Where do you go start a family? Where do you go buy a house? I want our rates to fund what we need to fund, but be competitive with our peers. And so, you know, when I look at, when I look at this, I do acknowledge that a couple of these are electric cities, then others are not. So they're generating revenues on sale of electricity and a little bit of a markup administrative cover that we're not. You know, we're not an electric city. For those of you that aren't familiar with that, Google it or ask our manager. You know, I'm comfortable with us remaining right around that median. But when you look at, you know, Wilson, Smithfield, Kinston, Jacksonville, that's our peer group. When you look, folks are looking at where are you going to go live over the next few years? They're probably going to be looking at what's the range of how far am I willing to commute out of Raleigh or out of Greenville? And so I appreciate this context is where I'm going with this. Because it helps me in my political justification for whatever it is that we do up here. I like to see, are we competitive with our peers? And I think that what you're suggesting is on the higher side of that. I think I would probably want to meter it, but ultimately, it'll be a vote of council. But I appreciate this context, is all I'm really trying to say.
Okay.
I just have a comment in the sense that the last time we did the wastewater treatment plant expansion, about 3.4, was, just to put things in context, was in 2020. And Bert and I talked about this, and it was about $33 million there. So again, that kind of shows you the compounding effect of what inflation has on things. So this wastewater treatment plant expansion isn't a matter of if it's going to be needed. It's going to be needed at some point in time. The tricky thing is determining when that time period, it needs to, when we need to, for lack of a better term, pull the trigger on that. So we're looking at that. We've got the merger regional feasibility study. It'll look at demand outlooks for when the sewer treatment plan is needed. But, you know, I hope that Goldsboro will remain the, you know, would certainly lobby for us to be the regional provider like we are now. But we also have to think about, if we're going to be that regional provider, we have to have the sewer capacity. Because no matter where our rates are at, you know, even if they are a little bit higher, if we don't have sewer capacity, we're not going to be able to grow at all. So that's one of the things that's kind of fundamental to where we're at right now. And I wish I could say that when I did a regional plant back in 2016 or '17, it was SBR based, and it was only $16 million for a 6 million MGD plant. Double the size. It's a different type of plant, but it just shows you how expensive this is. Fuqua Varina did one just a couple of years ago. I think it just came online, and theirs was, what, $80 million, Bert? So I just put that in perspective. It's one of those things that, you know, with us running at 61% capacity with the committed flow we have on paper, with the subdivisions we know we've approved, you know, if we, I don't feel like Goldsboro is going to remain stagnant as a community. I think we're going to see growth pressures, so we have to be thinking about this sooner rather than later.
We absolutely got to, we have to move forward with the wastewater treatment plant. I mean, it's part of this whole regionalization conversation. And where, you know, the city of Goldsboro is going to remain in a leadership role on that. You're absolutely right. We've got to do the wastewater treatment plant. We can't kick that out. Yeah, it's balancing it.
Other questions?
So if, just if, we were to assume this 15% increase in the fiscal year '26, I respect what the mayor is saying, but if you look at the data, the data reflects that we still would be in competitive with our neighbors, because this is not apples for apples, because we're assuming that they're not having an increase. And they most definitely, the probability is extremely high because of their cosmetics in their communities, that they will indeed be having an increase. So we would still, if you look at it from that point of view, the 15% increase, we would still be at a competitive rate with all of our neighbors.
Let me throw away another flag in your way, if I can. So you heard this morning, you're going to have a significant increase in your property tax base. Anywhere, what was the range? 4, 30, 40, 50, whatever, there'll be a number there. There'll be a revenue neutral rate established by finance. You get a chance, look at that. Also, a lot of communities take this as an opportunity to raise, essentially raise their tax rate. You may go 5 cents, 6, I'm just making numbers up just for discussion right now. It may be 5, 6, 7, 8 cents above revenue neutral. So you add that in there, you add a utility rate increase. And again, that is a, those are significant policy discussions for a city. And how much, again, not just, it's just a discussion to have, something to think about going forward. Because you will have citizens who will complain about property taxes paying more. Citizens will complain, obviously, about raising their rates. Again, they're not looking at the study that you've done a great job of presenting. They're looking at a property bill and a tax bill that's in front of them. And again, I'm not advocating for you to stay where you are. I'm not doing that. I just want you to think about that as you go forward. And again, provide some type of information or direction for staff thinking about that as Matt has to prepare a budget going forward. So those are the pressures that you'll have to contend with. I just want to put that out there, so that you can think about it.
Comments? How did it scare you?
Well, I'll just add, I mean, we realize that utility rate and the, is a separate animal, so to speak, from the general tax rate. Although the taxpayer doesn't see it that way. But in reality, it is. And so therefore, we can have two different conversations. One is utility, the other is the other side of things. And I just, I don't see any way around what we're looking at with the utility side of things, because we know that we absolutely are in the position to where we need these things. And we're reaching, you know, a critical point with our water, not the wastewater, but our water facility that provides our water. We want to replace that, and that needs to be done, as I was speaking about a while ago. And the fact that we're the, basically, the first large city rolling east out of Raleigh after you get across 95, and that's part of what is continuing and will drive our growth here. Because it's, you know, as we know, Johnson County's filling up. And so we, as Matt said, we got a plan for, make sure we're doing what we need to do to be responsible and be able to take and grow and handle what comes our way. Because it's coming, both residential and, as I've said before, there's a lot of wheels turning, a lot of things going on, you know, with economic development and stuff. And we've got to be where we need to be with being able to provide services to take that, not only the industry, but the residential growth. I'm, again, I'm very appreciative of seeing it in front of us on paper like it is laid out.
Okay. You got it.
David, so this is on 5,000 gallons per month per resident. And many times, communities, when they hit this point where we are talking about rates, they look at tiered rate structures. Are any of these communities in a tiered structure?
Not, I'm trying to think off the top of my head. I may have to get back to you on that. I think most of them are flat, just a unit rate. But you're right, there are communities that have a conservation-type rate structure.
What that is, council, is your payments are based upon what you use and are tiers of use. So the more you use, the more you pay. It does two things. One, it rewards low users, and those who use pay more. And secondarily, it adds conservation to the element, too. I've seen many communities, when they get in this position, start looking at tiered structures, because it's, I think it's fairer. And I don't know what the level of complexity is to do that today, if we could do that kind of review. But I'm curious about the comparison. That's what I was always trying to get at, too.
Yeah, I can pull that information. What we're seeing, actually, more and more communities consider now, it is, historically, it's been inclining block rates to try to encourage conservation. But a lot of communities are now considering what's often termed a lifeline rate. So you'll price that first, maybe 3,000 gallons of water at a lower rate. And then everything above that would be, you know, just a unit rate. And essentially, what that does And essentially what that does is it says, you know, for domestic use, essential water use, you get a lower rate, and then anything above that. Issue with that is it does potentially penalize, you know, large families who just have to use more water indoors, but that is becoming more common.
And we don't have an irrigation rate, is that correct, also?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Kelly's comments sort of made me ask, have another question. So when we calculate what we would perceive the, or try to predict what the average residential rate bill would be based on that water usage, and this might be a question from Matt. So to come up with what that figure is, I would assume that that's taken into account what we charge our outside users and our commercial users based on that rate now is how you, because that's what you had to use to come up with that. So if the out of, whatever the proper term is, the out of city rate for water sewer is adjusted up, is it, or are you factoring in an adjustment up of that to come up with this figure? Or is that based on the existing?
Yeah, we're keeping the structure the same and just raising everything. Under this scenario, everything goes up to 15%.
Everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
You do have a 100% differential outside the city currently. I don't know that you could justify going higher than that, that would, but you could potentially consider a different rate structure as Kelly mentioned. One other item, just to kind of drive home, and this comes from the financial perspective, from Ted's perspective, if you tell us that you essentially need $120 million in three years, you don't have cash within the utility fund to do that, you've got, you know, 33 million, that would, you could spend that down to zero. But in order to actually get the funding, to get the borrowing, you would essentially be forced by the market to increase your rates. They would require you, you have to meet these metrics in order to essentially get the borrowing amounts. And so unless we can get that amount for the wastewater treatment plant reduced by grants or if there's another funding source, if the general fund could fund it somehow, but if it's in utilities, there's not a lot of options. I just want to make that clear that, you know, I think you can stay within the range of the other communities with these increases. There's things we can shave on the edges, but rate increases of some level will be required, most likely to be able to secure that financing. If that's, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Let's go to the mayor. Okay. Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I really want us to look toward some type of grant to help us with this water increase because while there are so many people in our community that understand, and we all understand what we have to do to get where we need to be, but I still think we need to look at grants to help us with, if we're going to, we haven't voted on it and we're not going to vote on it today, but I want us to begin to look for, look forward down the road to find other resources to help us fund this rather than to just go up on our utility.
Absolutely, and we're going to really work hard on that to try to identify funding sources, the consultant's working on that. Our first order of business, and you'll hear this later today, is to design a plan. When we decide to go ahead and go to full construction, we'll be kind of based on what our models tell us when we're going to need it. But I can tell you from experience, by the time we get all of this kind of stuff and where our model's going to tell us, it's going to be probably needed. But, you know, our goal is to get, you know, funding from various sources, whether it's the federal or state legislature or just various grants to try to reduce the financial burden on this, this project.
I'm just going to reassure, just put those watching at home, the press, this council, just put your heart at ease. Absolutely, we are uncovering every stone that we can for funding assistance, either in the form of state DEQ, no or low interest loans, assistance from federal, assistance from the Department of Commerce as it relates to expanding it for the purpose of industrial, which obviously residential would benefit from. Yes, absolutely, even as recently as, was it, days are blending together, having Don Davis as regional director in our office, literally earlier this week or into last week, you know, having, having these conversations, it's, I just want council to feel reassured enough that you can assume that that is absolutely a concern because we can't just put it all on the backs of our residential rate payers, that's not fair.
And that's not what David Hyder is proposing either, her presentation is modeling what I would call the worst case scenario.
Right.
You know, in terms of projected cost, in terms of how much money, you know, it's going to require, you know, if we don't get any grants at all.
Right.
So when you typically go to build something like this, and I'm going to knock on some fake wood here, whatever, but you might have some funding from the Golden Leaf, you might have some from the state, you might have some from the federal government, you know, there are ways. Hopefully, we can do this before funding from the federal levels dries up, but that is a concern that I have, just what kind of federal funding we're going to see in the future.
Can we ask one last question and then I'm yield?
Sure.
I told you, I promised I wouldn't take over and ask so many questions. Every year I bring this up as well, what will we do on our commercial rate payers, our industrial rate payers? There's some contracts that are 40 years guaranteed stuff that we can't impact, but I just want to reassure everyone else, what does that look like? The commercial rates, the industrial rates, those are some things.
Well, it's a good question, Mayor, and you know, we can treat everybody equal through our grant groups, as long as the rates that we charge our citizens, we can go up the same amount like he's proposing. That's sort of an equitable way to do it because we've, we've equalized our rate structure a lot better now to where I think it's kind of much more fair across the board. Nobody likes rate increases, but I don't like inflation when we, when we built a plant for 15 million, it's a different kind of plant, or we built it for 33 million in 2020. Now it's over 100 million, so two thirds of a, you know, 66% increase in cost. That's why, you know, we're having to do this and, you know, it's just the cost of doing business.
You're running the show.
Okay. Is it, okay.
David, would you be willing to, okay, when you talked about the lifeline rate, is that kind of the same thing that Kelly mentioned with the tier system?
Yeah, it's, historically, if you go back 10 years, there were a lot of communities that had these tiers that were basically to try to discourage outdoor water use, sort of to charge more for outdoor water use. But in recent years around the country, you've seen more and more communities considering a lifeline rate, which is just, just that first quantity of water at a reduced rate and then everything above it. Because there's issues with conservation type rate structures, you can have large families that go into those higher tiers, even though they're using water inside the house. You can have fluctuations because if you have a dry year versus a wet year, you have big fluctuations in your revenues. And so to really target just an affordability approach, communities have done that lifeline, where you set that first quantity of, you know, necessary indoor water use at a lower rate.
So my follow-up question would be, since I've been on council, I've always seen it presented, how you just presented it.
Yep.
Would you be willing, and I don't know if this is a fair ask here and it may require conversations off the mic, to at least show us that visually, what it could possibly look like if we was to do a tier system setting, just what you just explained?
Yeah, a lifeline.
So that we can see it? I don't want to put you on the spot, you don't even have to commit to it, I'm just saying, it would be helpful to see another option?
Yeah.
On paper.
Yeah, we could definitely run those numbers. I probably can't have it done today, but we could certainly present it to council.
Thank you.
And then also for future discussions, you know, locating grant funding resources is a full-time job and grant writing is a full-time job. And any full-time grant writer is going to pay for their own salary. It really would merit us as a council for future discussions to look at hiring a full-time grant writer for the city of Goldsboro, and if not subcontracting out some of that work. But the grant, a grant writer will pay for their own salary.
Okay. Sir?
Very good point, because I mentioned that last year, and is there a way that we could figure that out? And I still would like to see that happen because I sincerely believe that staff, grant writer would absolutely pay for, pay for themselves. And I understand from conversations with our public safety folks that sometimes the grants that they need are more complex and completely different than other type of grants that maybe a general grant writer couldn't take care of some of that stuff. But absolutely, for all the other things that they could benefit us as a city, I would certainly be in favor of figuring out how to, how to fund that position and bring that on if possible. And to the mayor's point a minute ago about, or the concern about grant money and things like that coming in, a prime example of that kind of help that's out there is what we just got for Mount Olive Pickle as a result of economic development. Was that 20-some million that we got for infrastructure? Yes, whichever one you're talking about, it's the Mount Olive one was actually more than that. So that, that, that sort of help is out there and it's driven, in that case, by economic development, which is a, if there's a light at the end of the tunnel, to be able to look at in that regard, and this has been discussed a lot recently around the state, it seems to be that if you land a significant economic development project, all of a sudden, if you can land it, the help shows up to get it done, sort of like what happened with, with Mount Olive. And so that's another reason that we're as diligent as we are that what goes on with the economic development efforts behind the scenes is to continue to drive that because that's, you know, going to help pay a lot of bills from that point. But yeah, there is possibility for. So would the council want to see maybe a contract with a grant writing service? Because that situation might be a little bit more tenable for the city because rather than have to pay, you know, benefits and things like that, and then if we get to an environment where grants dry up at certain levels, whether the state or federal, then we don't have a grant writer sit around that's not like, a lot of grant money to apply for.
See, I beg to differ with you. I beg to differ. I believe it would be more advantageous to our city to have our own grant writer, and I am telling you, I work with grants every single day, a grant writer is going to cover their own salary. They're going to cover their salary and their benefits. So I'm going to beg to differ with you on that one. You will pay more for subcontracting out grants than you would having somebody on staff. And later, I'll even bring up in discussion how I think we can fund that grant writer.
Okay. I just, I just don't know, I mean, I'm just asking because
Yeah.
I really feel like we're going to see the pendulum swing. I wish we could have gotten ahead of it four years ago, but the pendulum is swinging way this way. Here's the money, it's going back this way. And, you know, and not just at the federal level, but the state level, I think, too.
Yeah. I believe that we as a city are behind in that, that grant writer should be a priority for the city.
Well, I would, and again, I support that because if you look at what a grant, like the person that's doing the grant, what the admin fees are that goes for the grant service, for the person that wrote it, just, you know, if it's 10% or whatever for administering it, if we were able to write and administer it, I mean, yeah, that would be an opportunity to more than pay for that. I realize what the manager's saying, if you don't have a grant, then how are you, then you're not paying your grant person, but I agree with you in the times that we're in, I think that there's going to continue to be opportunity to make use of that position. Just my thoughts.
One last comment.
Okay, go ahead.
If it's the right grant, in reference to what the interim city manager said, if it's the right grant writer, those funding sources will never dry up because that grant writer were white and worked with the different department heads and said, there's no way possible, if you have the right grant writer in place, that the funding will ever dry up. Could you always go for other resources, whether it's for apparatus, whether it's for water, whether, you know, whether it's for parks and recreation? It won't dry up, there's no way.
Well, it is great.
So I beg to differ.
No, I think it's great to have grant writers, I'm not against it whatsoever. I've gotten grants, grants and grants, and we've got a lot of them now. Hopefully, we can get more because we need, we need it.
Okay. Other discussions, questions, comments about utility rates?
Just kind of consensus wise, we have a couple of action items, right?
Not at this stage.
Well, for future presentation, so that then we can.
Yeah, for future presentation, we're going to look at the, summarize that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to analyze a different rate structure where we look at a, kind of an affordability rate, look what that would look like. One of the things we'd have to consider in that, whether the billing system can handle it, because that's one, one item for Catherine to consider because you would have to charge a different rate for different quantities for customers, that's one thing you have to think about, but I'd be happy to run those analysis and include that. And then it is a financial model, so if we want to look at increased grants in the future, you know, what happens if it's more than 20%? And run those various scenarios, we can run, you know, an infinite number along those lines, but I think those are the main items.
Okay. Is that Catherine, Mayor?
Good.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions? If not, let's take a 15-minute break, Mayor, is that okay?
If it's all right with you, I'm going to go ahead and recesses for, it's 1:50 now, we'll recess until 2:05, and then we'll still be ahead of schedule, but we'll keep on rolling.
Keep rolling.
Everyone good? All right, we'll stand and recess until 2:05. All right, we'll stand and recess until 2:05.
Go ahead and get back to their seats. We've got one more who's pink popping around that corner right now. Yep, perfect. All right. So with that, we'll go ahead and pull it back to order. And Mr. Durham, the show is yours.
All right. Thank you very much. We were just talking about rate increases and the capital improvement plan as related to water sewer, et cetera. So we have engineers from Hazen and Solari and...
Crowder Construction.
Sorry about that. So you guys have the floor now. Come on up.
Mayor, if I can provide a little background information...
Yes, if that's all right, we'll have Mr. Livingston give an update and then roll.
Just for information, and you guys might repeat this, but Crowder and Hazen are our design, 30% design engineer, design build contractors. So they're the ones that are going to be coming up with the plan and working with Burt and the wastewater treatment plant. And so we're on that first phase of that, and they'll talk about that. But that's who they are, and I think, you know, they've been to us before, but that's just for everybody's information.
All right. All right. Thank you for having us here today. Again, I think we spoke to you in the September timeframe. You know, I personally never sat through a two-day retreat like this packed full of so many important projects and initiatives. So I both applaud you and feel for you at the same time. I'm sure it's hard to keep things from, not from blending together. But, um, so yeah, we're here to talk about your important wastewater treatment plant project. I'm Chris Robards with Crowder Construction. Colin Beck and Tim Devine are here to speak to you as well. We also have Rick Prosser and Brendan Buckley here with us, familiar faces. So regarding the agenda... Ah, sorry, I forgot about the actual presentation piece of this. So regarding the agenda, Colin is going to provide a brief overview of the project, including reasons why this project is needed, and a review of the current treatment plant capacities. I'm going to speak to you about the current status of the project, including the future timeline and cash flow projections. And then Tim is going to speak to you about the different funding options available. That's Colin.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Hello, everybody. So just to begin with the reasons for expansion. So some reasons for expansion, we've got additional sewer capacity to support economic growth. So, you know, there's currently, you're in progress with some industrial, commercial, and residential development, and then there's more pending approval and planned in the future. Another reason for the expansion would be to replace and upgrade aging infrastructure. The last major plant expansion was in 2003. There was a major plant expansion before that in 1991. And then some of the infrastructure at the facility is actually still from the original plant construction prior to that. So, you know, as part of the additional, you know, supporting economic growth and development, you have the regulatory 80-90 trigger. So we're going to talk about that a little bit more on the next slide. But what the 80-90 regulatory rule tells you is that an evaluation is required, an evaluation of facility is required prior to reaching 80% of your permitted capacity. And then prior to reaching 90% of your permitted capacity, you need to have all of the permits in place for an expansion to the wastewater treatment plant. So moving to the next slide to talk about that a little bit further, you can see the blue line here represents the permitted flow of 14.2 MGD. The green line represents 90% of that flow at 12.8 MGD, and then the red line represents 80% of that flow. So what's plotted here is historical flow over the last six years. And you can see in 2020 and 2021, those dots are right there at that 80%. Those were particularly rainy years. There is some I and I in the system that can, that can result in higher flows at the facility. You can see in the next, the following three years, '22, '23, '24, it was lower, but is starting to trend up again. So, you know, this, this does not include planned development, things that you are currently in progress. You know, of course, this is just, this is just a look at the historical, right? So you currently have development in progress and planned future development, so that, you know, that's not obviously represented on this slide. So, you know, as City Manager mentioned at the beginning at the lead-in, we do have a early start contract. Part of the scope and services of that contract are to review in more detail the historical flows and, and look at some of the data coming from other studies y'all are doing currently in parallel that include updates to your comprehensive land use plan and some work being done on flow monitoring and capacity evaluation of the collection system to, you know, to help project what those flows look like, you know, years to come, 10, 20, 30, 40 years to come.
For context, before we leave this slide, Mr. Livingston or any member of staff, Jonathan, could y'all kind of give us a spitball of where we are if you included the planned stuff, the stuff that's already permitted and allocated?
I'll be happy to do that.
If you don't mind.
So right now, if we look at, on paper, when we added the flow that's committed, on paper would be above 70%. This represents, as you can see, about 61% is what our flow is now, and we're having sort of more of a normal year in terms of rainfall. We feel like some of the projects have helped reduce the inflow and infiltration, but that's been offset by the growth. So what we're doing right now is basically planning and preparing for design expansion based on growth, what we know to be expected or on paper right now as well. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, Mayor, but it's essentially, that's real data, and we haven't added in the actual paper flow, which would be over 70%, and the other flows that we are going to model as a regional system.
So on, if you include the things that are already permitted and are either under construction or about to be under construction, the dot would be somewhere in between that last gray dot and the red line, somewhere right in the middle?
It'd be between 60 and 68%.
Okay.
And then if you add in the paper flow, it'd be more like another 70 to about 72, 73%.
Okay. So about halfway in between that last gray dot and that red line, if you include everything that's currently permitted?
Yes.
Is that a fair statement? Bert, you're shaking your head. All right.
Awesome. So this slide, I think, I think we looked at, actually this slide and the next slide, but just at the, at the meeting back in the August-September timeframe. But just to remind everybody, the requested scope of services for this project included distribution and collection ops building as well, and that's just shown on that site. But today, we're really just talking about the scope of work at the water reclamation So at the water reclamation facility, this, this slide is representing a schematic of the work that we would anticipate that needs to be done. Of course, we haven't yet really dove into the design, so, and that will inform us specifically as to what we need to do. But we do anticipate, you know, there's about, this is a summary of the work to be done. We've got about 16 items listed here, some brand-new facilities, some rehab rehabilitation of existing facilities. But of course, all of the investments that we are making now and necessary for the expansion, would make for the expansion to 14.2, would certainly consider, would be, would also be good and consider the work that would need to be done for any future expansions as well. And an example of that future expansion would be item number three in the dashed line. And again, this is conceptual schematic, but that's a major facility that we know something would be needed there in the future. Any questions on that slide? That, that really does it for the, kind of, an overview of the expansion, and then we're, if there's no questions, Chris will talk about the current status and project timeline.
Questions right now? Anyone? All right.
All right. Current status of the project. I now see that the screen is right here beside me, so that helps. Thank you. So in December, we entered into a contract to provide kind of early or preliminary engineering services for this project. That includes activities such as sampling and the associated study of the wastewater influence that's currently coming into the plant. That helps determine the best treatment process for the incoming flow, also do a condition assessment. It's another important task. Colin mentioned it, the need for the replacement of the aging infrastructure. This task allows us to really better define that scope of work. And then we'll also perform tasks such as flow projections, treatment plant, some process modeling, and we will better understand the permitting requirements associated with development of this project. And then Tim will also talk about part of this early scope is the funding. That Tim's going to speak to. Assuming, so what does the future project look like, or the timeline associated with the future project? This is the important piece to understand for your, your, your planning purposes. Assuming you have additional funds available in July, the detailed design activities will begin this summer. That design will take, you know, anywhere from 18 to 24 months to complete before construction will begin. Once construction begins, it'll be ongoing for about three years, meaning that the city will have the additional capacity needed five years after the detailed design begins, or five years from today, if you will. So if you're in a position to begin this summer on the project at large, that additional capacity will be available to the city in year 2030. Regarding the cash flow associated with that timeline, you recently entered into that contract for $600,000. That takes you through June of this year. An additional $10.9 million is needed July of this year to keep the design moving forward with the balance of the anticipated budget of, with the balance of $108 million being needed in January of 2027. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tim to talk about, Tim, to talk about funding options. Oh, sorry. This line.
The punchline. Excuse me? The punchline.
The one, yeah. Sorry about that. Great. So talking a little bit about funding and opportunities, really wanted to just provide an overview of what the typical world of options is for water wastewater infrastructure projects, a little bit of North Carolina focus here, but just to talk through what the typical state, federal, you know, non-self-funding opportunities that are, that are out there. And the first one I know that the city has experience with is the State Revolving Fund Loan Program. So that's going to be a low-interest, low-market-rate loan that's administered by the state, and two funding rounds per year, typically for the wastewater side, around $100 million per funding round eligible to, to be awarded by the state for that program. And current interest rates based off of the state's programs would be between 0 and 1% is what the city could qualify for. There are some principal forgiveness opportunities there, based off of the current scoring of the city and the characteristics of the service area. The city would be eligible for up to 75% of principal forgiveness, but for a project this size, that type of money just doesn't exist. And a more typical principal forgiveness amount would be somewhere in the neighborhood of around $500,000 per round. A couple other notes, the max award for any one round would be $35 million. So you would see that for a project of this scale, you would need a couple rounds of successful funding in order to fully fund the project, and also that this project does not align very well with the state's funding priorities. So as an expansion project, it's not going to score as high as a project that just focuses on replacement and renewal of existing infrastructure without expanding capacity and without a large amount of violations and things like that. Again, it just doesn't score as high in the current priority system. So it, this project has already been submitted. You never know what can happen in any given funding round, but I would say the likelihood of scoring frequently in the max total of getting 35 million is probably not a very high probability. A second one is the WIFIA. So this is administered by EPA at the federal level. Again, a below-market-rate interest program. So still alone, some notes here is the interest rate will not be as favorable as the State Revolving Loan Program, and you can only fund up to 49% of the project through that one source, so it still need to be supplemented by other programs. On the positive side, the likelihood of success of being awarded, I think, would be much higher in terms of being able to access that type of funding, should that be something that you want to pursue. The next source is USDA. So based off of the city's size, you would not be eligible for the standard rural development loan, but you would be eligible for their guaranteed load program, which just provides another way to access funding. And they, USDA provides guarantees to traditional lending organizations and provides some financing benefits that I'm sure that Ted and David Port could provide more information on the potential viability of those types of program. Again, it provides up to 100, 100 million in that guaranteed load program. The next one is the more typical traditional funding methods, some combination of pay-as-you-go funding and issuance of revenue bonds. And so that would be with self-funding as opposed to using a state or federal funding opportunity. Just wanted to include some others that, for completeness, so community development block grants often used for water wastewater infrastructure. The city, it does not fall into the characterization of an entitlement city, so there's less opportunities for being able to access those funds. And those, along with things like EDA, are not going to be in the scale that could fully fund the project anyway. So those are going to be in the low millions of dollars as a maximum amount that they would have available. So when you're getting in the tens of millions, it's just not the, a opportunity for fully funding the project. There are some organizations like Golden Leaf Foundation, especially if the opportunities to show how the economic impact and benefit from an overall project could help support this project. But again, it's going to be in the hundreds of thousands or probably one or two million that would be the maximum amount that they probably could be able to support based off of what their, their traditional ability to help infrastructure projects. But a large one that has become more available in recent years is direct appropriations, both at the federal and state level. So those are federal and state legislators understanding the, the benefit and impact of potential projects and writing directly into state and federal budgets appropriations to support the project. And both at the state and federal level, North Carolina communities have benefited from those in significant ways in recent years, and it's opportunities to get funding at the state levels, particularly when you don't score as high on the, in the SRF scoring So if we look at all of those combined in terms of a summary, there's really sort of two types here. There's the self-fund, those are those traditional combination of pay-as-you-go and revenue bonds. The benefit there is you're going to have more control of your schedule and timing. You will be dictating that. You're going to not have any additional administrative requirements associated with any of these programs. One of the things I didn't bring up earlier on any of those state or federal programs is they, they do have requirements such as Davis Bacon wage requirements. So ensuring that all labor is in compliance with the federal standards with the Davis Bacon, as well as additional environmental review. And a big one that is new with the latest rounds of WIFIA and SRF funding is the BABA Act, which is Build America, Buy America Act, which is a federal procurement sourcing. So equipment and material that are used in the project have to comply with that, which can be a adder to the project construction cost. So the challenges with self-funding is you don't get the benefits of any grant funding or potentially the structuring or the reduced interest rate that the state or federal programs at. And then on the opposite side, for the state and federal funding, you're going to have the reduced financing cost, but, as well as the potential flexibility, but you're going to have to deal with those additional administrative requirements. You're not guaranteed that even if you apply, you're going to be awarded, and you're going to, yeah, potentially, or likely increase the overall construction cost due to those material and schedule impacts associated with those programs. So a lot of information there, but just wanted to give an introduction of the overall evaluation of what we have been looking into as potentials for, for funding. And I think that concludes everything that we had prepared for today. So I think any of us are available to ask questions, if there's questions on any of that content.
Okay. The gentlemen have presented, and any questions, comments, for discussion right now?
One, just, just for clarification, going into this year's budget, what's the hit this year's budget?
That's the slide that I didn't put up. Yes, $10.9 million.
Utility fund, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
What's the, so you have a construction start date of January 2027, construction start date of 2027, completion 29. What's the chain supply like now as far as lead-up, these products coming in, as far as build-out? Can you meet that schedule in two years right now?
Yes. Yeah. The, it's really stabilized. I don't think, so two things. One is pricing and lead times. Pricing has really stabilized. We haven't seen anything come down, but the percent increase has greatly stabilized. As far as the lead times, electrical gear and generators still have quite a long lead time, but even then, it depends on the manufacturer. And the, you know, Tim mentioned BABA requirements that plays into lead times. So depending on the funding that, that is chosen, that could impact the schedule. And it, and it could impact, I'll give you an example. There's, there's two different generator manufacturers that come in mind right now. One of them can produce the generator in 80 weeks. The other one is 142 weeks. One of those would be BABA compliant, one of those may not be. So there's a kind of a matrix of decisions there, but in general, yes, with, if we can start this, you know, that schedule you said, it's assuming it starts this summer, the design.
So Mayor, just for clarification, that's one thing that we talked about, and we go out for loans for that. And the general thought is if, get the project shovel ready, you have a better chance of securing grants or other funding.
Well, to that point, we've, we've got to be in a spot where we know specifically what to ask for, and that's, that's what we're doing, is getting to where that we can have a specific conversation with either a granting body or a, you know, direct community appropriations, you know, body, to be able to say, here's exactly what we're doing, here's exactly when we would need what amount of money.
So I guess I'm just saying that I really feel like this board needs to be committed to this project, which I feel like we are, you know, because now the real bigger money's coming into play.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, thank you so very much for presenting. We're going to move on, and you may, well, you do recall that we're going to take up a couple of items that we're going to do tomorrow, and they would be the nonprofit and other agency funding discussion, as well as code enforcement. We'll do those two right now, and if that's not a problem, three to one. So I'm going to start out on the discussion for the nonprofit funding, and let me just say that, again, based upon my experience, there are lots of nonprofits out there that do an absolutely great job. They provide critical services to a lot of activities, in a lot of instances, that are very supportive of the city's mission. A lot of the things that they do support the things that you are in favor of. The problem that we have, and again, it's, it's a problem that a lot of jurisdictions have, is how do you truly vet to determine whether, or how you provide funding to them? And again, you have to ask yourself a couple of basic questions. Is this, is this something that you want to fund? That's the first question. Then the second one is that if you are funding it, what criteria are you going to use in order to make that happen? The city currently does not have a method to determining how those, how we vet it, or how the nonprofit would be, how they'd be awarded. Last year, the city did use the United Way and allocated 123, 24 budget, allocated $100,000, of which 10K was set aside to administer the funding and also offer that proper vetting. I think it's important to have, and again, just give you my experience, and I remember nonprofits come into the board meeting just about every month, or every other month, asking for money. And again, you're smiling for a good reason, and they had, they had good, good projects, good programs, and again, ones that were, had significant impact, and again, aligned with the city's goals and objectives. But how do you, from a equity objective standpoint, fund, you almost, if you fund them on a monthly basis, or funded them in the middle of the year, then how are you weighing or vetting those other requests? those other requesters to the ones that you have in front of you? So it's just hard unless you have some type of system or process that's in place to, to do that. And again, you got to make the first, you got to answer that first question. Is this something that you want to do? Do you want to consider funding nonprofits?
Is that an out loud question?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, that's a question.
Okay, I'll answer. I definitely do want to support nonprofits. I would like for us to consider to support those organizations that are aligning with our council priorities.
You got a list?
A list of our priorities?
No, a list of those nonprofits.
Well, I have a list of, no, but just based off the last year ones, we usually see the same nonprofits come through for funding, and we oftentimes share that funding amongst all of them. I just mentioned last year that we get more focused on the organizations that are aligning with what we consider priorities to better serve some of the issues that we have going on now as a council.
Okay. So you would, so I can understand, so you would like to see us funding those if they're aligning with priorities that we've established, that the board has established or the city has established?
It's something about the if. I don't want, I don't want it to, I don't, I don't want it to come across in a negative way. I'm just saying if we may conserve more, if we have a, if we prioritize how we fund based on what we consider priorities.
Okay. Yes, sir.
As you mentioned in your comments, you're for lack of, I believe, in that budget, when we gave the funding to the United, to the United Way and had them take care of that, I thought that was a great way to be able to make the money, the monetary donation, and then let the folks at Dexburgs and Dillon and all that do this stuff and deal with dispersing. And I would be in favor of doing that again, certainly as Councilwoman just mentioned, that I'm sure they would be open to hearing our suggestions as to what we would like to see. But I'm okay, the group thought it was okay to handle it, continue to handle it, I guess, is what I'm getting at with the United Way, just my thought.
I also, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. So I also would like to see our process or have a process where we treat everyone the same, you know, where there's, you know, we require them to do this, that, and third, but I think every organization should be required to do the same exact thing, or the requirements or do-backs from us for us should be the same across the board.
Okay. All right.
And that was very similar to what I was going to say. I was going to talk about the requirements, but we need to be fair to everyone. And if this person is required to do whatever our requirements are, they are responsible for having whatever they need to have in that they have in, and that we, there is no second presidents for this particular nonprofit. Not saying that we have, you know, this particular person, oh, well, they didn't get this in or they didn't get that in, so, but we're still going to help them do this. I know we all, I am for helping the nonprofit, so I want to make that very clear.
Okay.
But I do think that we need to be fair, and everybody needs to follow the same requirements, and that's it. And I think that makes it very easy, very cut and dry, and no one feels left out.
Okay, now, just so I can understand, so in that model, the city would establish the criteria, goals, objectives, and would evaluate those?
Yes.
And have a certain amount of money set aside for that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Yes, ma'am.
I see what Mayor Pro-Tim was saying, because just yesterday I was talking to a couple of people over in the planning department, and they had a list of contractors where we're looking at demolition stuff, but they had boxes, and you had to check all the boxes to qualify. So like, I totally agree with that, being able to check the boxes.
Okay.
Wouldn't, if the United Way was the recipient of those funds, they would be the person doing that and ensuring that all of, any recipient met, met the proper criteria, correct?
It could, could, if I, sorry for interrupting, if you establish those criteria in advance, you enumerate those, whatever they are, and again, just look, just talking out loud, then United Way or some other agency would have that criteria, they could, they could rate or evaluate those nonprofits based upon that established criteria.
Well, and my thought process with that would be that we made the donation and we weren't directly the one handing out the money. We made the donation to the United Way and let them vet and see to it that folks are properly qualified, as Pro-Tim mentioned, et cetera, and then that would be not something that we had to put our hands on. And we remain neutral in that to some degree, too, with some guidance and input of what we thought.
We'll go back to the mayor and then, then you, Mrs.
So the, I think the United Way was a fantastic partner. And when the funding level was $100,000, it made, it made business sense for them to be that intermediary, because they provided a customized service for us where that they, they took the money and then used our rubric, they convened a committee that was not, that was not full of politicos. So it was intended to be, you know, a not politically biased, not earmarks-for-your-friends kind of thing. It was intended to truly be that, and it was, I think. And then they brought a list to us and said, okay, here's who we've vetted, here's the amounts that we recommend, and ultimately, that's what happened. This year, in the budget, we set aside 50, 30 of which has been allocated, actually not in a true grant, in a specific service contract. So now we're down to 20. It doesn't make business sense for them to provide that same level of service at that funding amount, but of course, they would be willing to receive the funding and then give us a report back on where it went. And that's, they've never said they wouldn't do that. My stance on NPO funding in general, and when you look at, and I realize Raleigh is its own animal, I'm not trying to suggest that we are the same as Raleigh, but I look for certain consistencies in policy and process, right? The way that, the way that they, and Wilmington, too, for that matter, look at your certain organizations that may or may not be nonprofits that you have procurement contracts through, you know, the Raleigh Chamber, for example, is, they're not a general grant recipient of the City of Raleigh, they are, they're a contract.
That's outside of that.
Right. They're a contracted service provider of the city, of the City of Raleigh. But then the City of Raleigh, Raleigh, as a actual city ordinance says, is a $1 per taxpaying citizen, something like that, will be set aside in the budget to be able to fund a grant funding pool. And then you go to the City of Raleigh's website, they've got a rubric, and it says, here's all the things, and then you can go through the application process. And again, they have folks outside of the elected body, you know, helping to vet those and pull those together. I think that we as a, as a policy ought to look at something with that level of rigor and structure, because I don't want this to be, you know, me up here lobbying for a 2,500 or $5,000 allotment, or that's a general grant to a organization, but not a specific deliverable purely because they're my friends. And I don't want anyone else to do that either. I think that the taxpayers deserve more, deserve more accountability, and I think, you know, folks up here agree. And so we have two questions kind of on the table. One is what do we do with the funds in current year FY that are sitting there that need to be allocated? And then what do we do going into next year? Do we allocate funds? If so, how much and under what structure?
Right.
Just going that on the table.
Okay.
Well, the mayor kind of touched on a piece of what I was saying, because I wanted to refresh my remembrance, because with my understanding, and I have nothing against United Way.
Sure.
But it was my understanding that United Way was going to provide that service for us, and I know that 30 of the 50 has already been allocated. So then the other 20, if, if what, I don't think we decided that United Way would do it, but if it would go to United Way, then that would also eat up some of the $20,000 that we would be able to give to a nonprofit. Am I?
You're spot on, you're spot on. It's just a matter of deciding what, how we want to allocate that 20. Do we want to just simply allocate it to United Way and say, please give us a report on the back end, or do we want to handle ourselves? Because just all options are on the table.
How much will it cost for United Way to do that and give us their information? That give us all?
It would just be, it would be written as a general contribution to United Way. It would just go into their general fund that they're using to fund participating organizations. So it wouldn't be like in, like last year where that they gave us a breakdown and said, here's our, our fee, here's, it would just be, here's the general impact.
What you're saying is that they would provide you some type of reporting?
Well, absolutely. Their annual report would include the City of Dullesboro was a $20,000 contributor. I mean, that would absolutely be there, but as far as the specific breakdown in addition to an administrative fee, it wouldn't be that structured like last year at this funding level.
Okay.
Would that relinquish our recommendations as to how they disperse that money?
Actually, no. What, what their director did communicate to us, and Matt, feel free to chime in if I'm missing anything here, I am shooting from memory a little bit here, is that they did say, if you want to direct it towards a specific category, if you want to direct it specifically towards youth programming, or gang prevention, or drug rehabilitation, or housing, you know, they did say if you want to earmark it towards a specific category.
They actually preferred that, because that's the model they're leaning towards.
But is that, and again, being the Saints advocate, then if a nonprofit comes to you and they're providing funding for battered women, for example, then you're not, you don't, you don't know where you might, you're not assured that that money's going to, if that's a priority for you, you're not sure where that, if that money goes to that agency or not.
Right. And in, in that situation, it would be, here's our contribution to United Way, and when that person comes to us requesting funding, I'm not proposing this, I'm just outlining so we're all on the same page of, and, and approach. We would then refer that agency or that person or that new nonprofit to the United Way, for them to go through their process to be vetted and all that other fun stuff. We would not be the ones vetting it under that model. I'm not proposing that, I'm just simply getting us on the same page of that approach.
Here's my concern. All across the country, NPO funding has really been a concern for many municipalities, many cities, and it's the vetting process. You have to make sure, especially in the state of North Carolina, that they are a 501(c)(3), that they have a annual state solicitation license, and that vetting process takes time. Now, that's going to taxi our employees, our finance department, our HR department, whoever is going to take on that responsibility. And in the past, our city would require an audit from a nonprofit that maybe had a higher budget than some of the other nonprofits, but then if you had a nonprofit that was smaller, they were not required to have the same exact annual audit that the other nonprofit was having. I think we are setting ourselves up for failure unless somebody in staffing is going to take on that vetting responsibility, and then that's going to taxi your staff. You're going to have way much more staff to keep up with all these certifications with the state of North Carolina. Is it not a better course of action for us to consider an agency like United Way and say, this is our vision, these are the kind of groups that we would like to support, and let them take on that vetting process, and then, like you said, come back to us and bring a report of this is the seeds that were sown with your daughters, with your dollars, and these were the lives that were impacted with your contributions?
And you're okay with not, I mean, it's a general, it's a general, I'm trying to get back to the reporting side of this, it's a general reporting. We're not going to be able to say we provided funding to this specific nonprofit, but we, these are the things that we did as a whole for United Way, your dollars contributed to this.
I am telling you that United Way can do it either way for you. They can either give you a general reporting, this is the lives, the amount of lives that were impacted, or they can also come back and say, this is XYZ group that we supported, and they line up with your mission and your vision and your strategic plan that you set forth.
Matt?
So I absolutely agree 100% with Councilwoman Weeks and Councilwoman Foray. We've gone through the before and after of having to struggle with trying to properly vet the, and then getting accused of politically favors or things like that. But it was very arduous at times for us to go through a lot of these things, and it took a lot of time out of people's days. And in some ways, I didn't think that we were really properly prepared to do this kind of vetting. And so I think the, when we did switch it over to the United Way, it was a very smart decision, it went very smoothly. Prior to that, it was a train wreck, bluntly put. So I would recommend that we find, and I'm not recommending the United Way, it just happened to be that when we did give that, everything worked smoothly there. So an agency that would help the city do this would be my recommendation to take the, sort of the perceived politics out of it.
Let's go with the.
One more thing, one more thing. An agency doing that, it takes away the possibility of favoritism among your board members. You asked a question a while ago, what if it's a new nonprofit? They go straight to United Way to express their interest in applying for those NPO, NPO funds, and then that takes it away from us, so, and I'm strictly using this for an example, they don't say, well, Beverly Weeks showed favoritism to Christopher D'Amici's or to, it shouldn't be that way. I'm trying to take that burden off of us as a city.
When I spoke earlier, my, my second end of that question was that it was my understanding that United Way had said that they would not provide that service. Did you understand that's what I was saying?
Yes, ma'am, and you're correct, but it was under the auspices of how we had the money last year. Because we had deviated from the original amount that we had promised the United Way, which was, hey, we're going to set aside $100,000 on this budget line, but when we cut our budget, the dollars decreased, and then United Way said, hey, that is just not, you know, it doesn't bring.
Okay, so then, my understanding is, okay, so then they are back on the table again as an agency that we can use.
I think that the, I think the summary to both of y'all's points in, actually, and Matt as well, is that if we want to go the route of having United Way as that intermediary, I'm confident that that board and that director would figure out a way to make it work. I've not asked them, but I have enough faith in them as an organization that I think they would, but I'll go back to stop being quiet.
And along those lines, I would like to see us look at get our, not having to cut funding as far as we did last year. And I know that I would like to, like what we did, and I understand it was in the middle of a budget year, we had a decision to make. I completely support our efforts and our monetary donation to community supporting schools, and I want that to continue, but I don't want that, that, I look at them as a partner, just like the Chamber or whatever, I wouldn't want to factor, this is just my opinion, I would like to factor that not as NPO, that the NPO money that goes to, if it, that's what we do, and it goes to United Way for them to do, or things they do, I would like for us to look at our, consider our partners separate so that we don't have to lower that money like we had to do in the middle of a budget cycle, like we had to do in the middle of a budget cycle. I had to do what we had to do, but I would like forward planning for that.
Let me understand, is there a, does United Way have a threshold? Do they need to be at that 100, do they need to be at that 100K or where that's the cutoff?
I don't know exactly, but, you know, that's what they kind of indicate.
So that was stated incorrectly, if you want to state it the correct.
Sure, sure. The, for them to do it the way, for them to do it the way that we asked them to, that we asked them to do it, it did not make business sense for them to do it in that format, that style of convening a separate committee for us, a separate application process for us. No. If we say, hey, here's a $20,000 commitment, they can absolutely give us a list back of saying, here's here's everyone funded with your commitment. We're so grateful to it and we look forward to, we're partnering with you next year. They could do that. The point was with the $100,000 commitment, they really created a whole separate process for us. And if I'm misstating on any of this, Octavius, you were in the middle of it, Matt, you were in the middle of it. It was truly a different set aside process for us, and that's a different burden.
Okay.
If you guys would like to hear the vetting process that the finance department's had to do with these, she's asked to speak to that. So Catherine, can you come up?
I can't probably remember everything I was thinking about.
At least y'all were talking, but there were several things that like just made my ears perk up. So one thing we have to remember is this money is not a grant. It is a contract for services. And the council has to remember, we can only spend money on what is constitutionally allowed by the state of North Carolina. So it can be health and welfare, education, helping the low to moderate income, so on and so forth, which is what all these great nonprofits do, okay? I wanted to speak, you know, I have staff that probably each quarter, if we had, you know, let's say five to 10 nonprofits, there were, you know, probably at least an hour to two trying to get that paperwork together, make sure that we vetted them, that they had their secretary of state and their charitable license solicitation, they had their 990s done. If they needed an audit, we made sure of that. We made sure our files were updated. What the United Way helped us do is they did that for us. And so Sherry and I speak the same language, you know. We know that paperwork that we have to have because we've done so many federal and state grants. So she did a fantastic job. We had a contract with United Way. Our contract was they, we would do the distributions twice a year in advance, and she would, she would get the paperwork that we needed. So the same stuff that I had to have my staff do every single quarter, she made sure that we had it. And she made sure that the council got their presentation to deliver to you what they had done with the money that you had granted them. So I just want to say, from a finance perspective, dealing through that process, I mean, it was just like quick pass. I mean, it was just so much easier. And it was so much easier on my staff when they got it because we could just lickety-split get those checks. Because we actually cut the checks to the nonprofit because that was who we were contracting with to provide food services or housing services or education or whatever. And that's how the agreement, it still worked fine. Now, my opinion is if the council, you know, likes that United Way model or something like that, I do have some concerns about just writing the check to the United Way. I think you need to be very specific about what it is. I want you to focus on the unhoused or reading or whatever. I think you need to be very specific. And I think it needs to be a requirement that in their, it doesn't have to be in their audit, but at least in their annual financial statements, there is a line that says, you know, city of Goldsboro, and if it's whatever X, 5,000, 50,000, whatever it is, then they need to account for us as a separate project and give this board the deliverables of this is how we spent your money on those things that you authorized us by contract to do. So I just wanted to make that, just from a standpoint, if you look on the backside of the decisions that you make and how it affects your staff, it really, that side was very much, doing it through the United Way was just so much easier to do. And like I said, we could get the stuff and it was on time and, you know, we just had it very well coordinated. So that was a really good move for us.
I ask a follow-up on that. The process that for them made sense at the $100,000 level was giving, you know, giving you the quarterly reports and then the city actually writing the check to the individual recipient.
Correct.
At the.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't want you to.
Oh, you're right. At that level, it made sense. The specific point, as I remember it, in fact, circumstances could have changed. But as I remember it, was that once we were talking about the current amount of money, like $20,000, it didn't make sense for them on their end to come back to us with the list and then us write the check to the individual recipient. It made more sense to them, as I remember it, that we write the total amount to United Way and the United Way give us, of course, a report on where it goes. But ultimately, United Way is the one writing the check to the recipient. Is that still?
Well, and that may have been, because I think I was out at that particular meeting. I know that I had a separate conversation with Sherry. And the way, the gist of the conversation I got is if the city said we wanted to pick either a certain organization, I'm just going to say wages or Salvation Army or whatever, you wanted to pick two, then we would distribute the money. Now, I think the, whether we pay it to directly or pay it to the United Way, as long as we know where the money is going, I think I'm okay with that because contractually, we can obligate them to report it to us like that. And I think the way I took it, Mayor, exactly what you said and the way of the process, that's exactly how I remember it, and that's how it went. And I kind of gathered from her is that it is too much to try to do the whole process. But if you want to pick one or two, or areas, one or two, then we can do it no problem. And the fee won't be, because there's not a lot of overhead, I guess, in that. And also too, is 15,000 is what you have left to allocate in the agency support if you choose to do so. There was 60,000 to begin with. We took 30 and then 50 went to, what's that organization? Lord, the Chamber. That was, I think that was where the other transfer went to.
So we did Chamber out of NPO?
It was in the total. Because remember that whole thing about the law, you can't vote on it but if you have somebody sitting on the board? So we had to put everything into that generic agency support pot. And then it was a separate, we had to do a separate, the mayor pro temp had to do the voting and you had to step away because of that conflict of interest thing that comes from that Senate bill or House bill that it was.
So the total amount remaining is what?
15,000. Yeah, not 20, so I just didn't want y'all to think there was an extra five out there that wasn't there. Okay?
Okay.
Just a quick question for you, Ms. Catherine.
Yes, ma'am.
And maybe I misunderstood. I thought when we came back to talk about the Chamber of Commerce, we agreed that it was going to go back to being its own separate line item, which means it's going to come from a different set of money. It wouldn't come out of our NPO funding.
It was in that, it was in the total. So it started with the, I think it was 45, but then I had to put the 15. I just moved it from Chamber line into that big pot. So that's how it ended up getting to 60.
But I think what she's asking, if I may, is if we had an inter-agency funding or a different type of line item besides nonprofits, I think that's how it makes delineate the difference between those two.
I mean, I would still, you know, this is where the law just makes it so complicated for us. I have to put it in something that's not specific or whomever is on that board is not going to be able to vote on the budget.
Well, we didn't vote on it anyway. So, you know, like for example, I'm an ex officio non-voting member of the Chamber of Commerce. I didn't vote on it anyway. And so regardless of which line item it goes in, we're going to comply with that process, even if it's purely, purely for appearances, we're going to comply with that. I didn't vote on it. So I wouldn't worry about that specific layer of it. And I don't want to give folks the impression that we were trying to skirt anything.
No, we did it separately. I pulled it out once we got the contract worked out with them. I pulled it out and did a completely separate budget amendment. And then you stepped aside and then allowed the rest of the board to vote.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So Ms. Catherine, I feel like I should know this, but just for clarity. As long as I can remember looking at the budgets, the Chamber has always had its own line item. And that money was never included in the NPO funding. So now it has to be included in the NPO?
No, it has its own line item. I moved it, all I did was there was line item A and line item B. And line item B is the Chamber. It had a zero budget. And when I did that budget amendment, then we moved 15 out of the general pot and then moved it down to a line item, because I can show it to you on my computer right now. It says Wayne County Chamber of Commerce has got the $15,000 in it. So it has its own line item now in the amended budget.
I think I'm just struggling to figure out how we got to 15 to work with now versus the 20. If we took the 30 from.
Okay, so let me say, there is 5,000 set aside for the, the United Way fee. So if you choose, it doesn't matter who you choose.
So it's 20. So it's 20. We're just kind of assuming that there might be an administrative fee?
Well, it was always a B when they did it.
Because they do work. I mean, she does, has to do a lot of footwork in order to get all that paperwork together. Now, whether it's 5,000 or 2,500 or, I mean, I don't know.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so it's just in a different line item, but it was specifically set aside for that.
Okay. That makes perfect sense.
Okay. All right, we're good. Sorry to confuse you.
All right. Other discussion, questions? So what I'm hearing is the United Way is a good conduit to use for nonprofit funding. And then, I don't see anybody shaking their heads, no, so. The second part of that is, is funding.
I will, I will just, just to add to what Councilman Boyet has said. I do agree that we do have some stakeholders that we often, that often come before us to ask for money. But I do think that we need to sit down and be, make a conscious effort that we treat all those entities the same. Like we just, we did name out community support schools, and I agree with that because they do great. But also on the same token, I would like for us to look at Dillup Alumni because I think they're a partner of ours as well. So I just want to make sure that we treat everybody, you know, the same when it comes to partnering or laboring them a partner.
And to that end, if we, maybe we create as a group and create a partner list that is those partners that we want to separate out from general donation for nonprofit. I think that's a fabulous idea if we did that and identified, because I agree, we should support, support, and that's a partner of ours because of the service they provide, just like the Chamber or Selena's group.
We're getting ready to let the exception swallow the rule if we're not careful.
So those are discussions that can be had during your budget deliberations? Matt, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, I'm hoping that we, you know, we'll get there.
But again, just to summarize, I think there is a comfort level that you have with the United Way and the provision of some amount of funding to them going forward and having some kind of agreement, them meeting your goals and objectives. And in the process that was just described is a equitable and fair way of handling this for nonprofits. Ms. Brannon?
Mr. Durham, can you help me get some clarity, or I guess amongst the group? So I have no problems with the United Way, and it took a great burden off the staff, so I support that. My concern, or I guess concerning question is, there's always a fee attached to using United Way service. And under that condition, it's a hard sell for me to say yes, using that having to pay a fee because it cuts into the overall money. I'm in full support if we can say, hey, okay, we're going to make a $20,000 donation to the, to United Way. But this is who we want to support, not naming a particular entity, but naming a specific service that they provide. I would much rather, but then that may eliminate the deliverables because we can't, we can't tell them to work for us for free. So then I'm kind of like in between, and I just kind of want to know the pleasure of the council and what they think about that, because I feel like we relinquish our power to get the deliverables. And we want to see the deliverables because we want to make sure they touch who they touch. And I know United Way is an integral organization. I'm not going to question that. But it's just, we give you the money and then what? And that's my only kind of hesitation with doing that.
And if we want to see the deliverables, which I understand what you're saying, I have no problem paying the admin fee for those deliverables that you would like to see because that admin fee is going to be less than what you guys are going to be paying for staffing. It's way less than what you're paying for staffing. It doesn't even justify. Your staffing will be, let's see, wait, no, 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 no. About two and a half, three times more than your admin cost for United Way. Now, almost four times more than your admin cost for United Way.
One thing I do know is that Sherry was going to come and listen to us, but we switched the time around. So I could, we could, you know, ask a lot of those questions of her. And I think she has told us before that.
Benchmark.
Yeah.
How, what have you seen as a best practice?
Well, it's all over the bench.
Right.
And you're, there's no pattern there based upon my experience. And again, when I worked, when I was working for Wake County, that amount varied every year. We kept the same process, and the process was really done by staff. Staff would receive those nonprofit requests. We've had established criteria. Then we would make allocations or have agreements with each one of those nonprofits, and the amount varies. And so I would imagine, one of the things here, one of the concerns with United Way is that you pretty much got that 100K level there. Because I, what I'm hearing is that if it's less than, if it's 50,000, then there's concern about whether or not they're recouping their admin fee with it.
And some of that was me putting words in their mouths. Their circumstances evolved just like every other organization, so I don't want to speak for them. That was simply the conversation some months ago when we were trying to unpack it all.
Yeah, and perhaps there's another as a to-do, to Matt's long list of to-do, is having that conversation with the United Way, getting some feel from them. And you guys had, was 100K about the max that you'd done previously for nonprofits? Have you done more than that?
Well, here's the thing. You don't, you don't really base it on a cap, and here's the reason why. These other cities that you may be referencing that could give more, they were not financially strapped like we were.
Yeah, right.
They were not financially strapped like we were. So here's a challenge. Also, think of it from the point of view, from the taxpayer's point of view or the constituents' point of view. Here you are, you want to increase my, increase my water rates, you want to increase my taxes, but then you're asking me to be generous and give you $350,000 to give away to a nonprofit that I may not even support that cause. That may not be my conviction as a taxpayer is. So a challenge to the council is, you know, think on it, pray on it, because what does that taxpayer want? Do they want you spending their money, raising their taxes, raising their water increase? And then you have the flexibility of spending XYZ on nonprofits that they may not even care to support? That's just another thought, another way to look at it.
Yeah, and again, I think it's going to, it's going to vary. You've got to decide what that number is on a annual basis, I think, Mayor.
Again, to that point, I very much echo those sentiments. And that's where I do see some value in tying it to, to that benchmark. Because say, for example, you know, with Raleigh, it was a dollar last time I looked. Y'all fact-check me. I'm going to be wrong, but I'm going to be in the ballpark. For us, that's 33. That's not 425. You know, is there a reasonable policy threshold, that benchmark that the council would be interested in pursuing? I'm not saying that's the benchmark, just putting the ideas on the table. Because ultimately, I want us to come up with something that is predictable and reasonable that the folks can, can see. And it's a transparent thing. It's digestible.
Yeah, I understand that.
So are you asking, just for clarity, so we can move the conversation, are you saying you want us to kind of think about the cap of what we give the nonprofit based on the 15? Or are you saying like an overall cap moving forward?
Overall, for future.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't this current fiscal year, it's the next fiscal year.
So follow-up question. We did agree to only fund that 30,000 this one time, right? Or is that our commitment from now until forever?
Talking about for community support schools?
Yes.
No, that was a one-time service contract. I'm sure that there, if we see value in it, we want to continue pursuing it if we can. But yeah, it was a one-time contract.
Okay. I was just saying that because it would have determined what I think of being reasonable.
My rule was, when I was sitting at Mazzie, is that I wasn't as concerned with dollar amounts that will fluctuate here based upon economic conditions, other priorities. But as long as I had my infrastructure, so to speak, in place, these are the, these are my goals. These are, these are things that are important to me, then I'm going to fund them. And I don't know what that level is going to be sometimes, but I'm going to fund them. And I don't think, and again, it's always used to, you know, the nonprofits telling them, well, the county, the city doesn't know what it's going to fund them. Again, a lot of that is, as Ms. Weeks talked about, I got tax increases to be concerned about. I got the water rate increases to be concerned about. So that amount is going to fluctuate annually, so I would, yeah. And it's, again, when you ask about other cities, it's all over the place. There are some who, who like to have nonprofits come to them every month and make a rep. request, so, not the best system, but-
It's a system.
Alright. Good discussion. I think, I think we're there. Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, we're not making a decision. Okay, what, what we're talking about is, again, developing a consensus on United Way, and Matt's gonna have a discussion with them in terms of what their minimum funding level would be, perhaps, if they're able to say that. And then us up at this board, doing your budget discussions coming up this spring, as to what level of funding.
And I would recommend we just bring them back in front of the council and have a discussion, if that's a pleasure of the board.
Alright.
Excuse me, you would recommend what?
That they come to the board to give a presentation, and you can ask some questions, and you guys can decide from there.
Okay. Everybody good? Alright, you guys, it's three fifteen, do you want to take a break, you wanna keep going? This will be the last item coming up, is code enforcement. You guys are ready, right?
Does, if I see a hand go up for a nature break, then we'll recess for seven. Do it. Keep going, keep going, keep going.
Keep going. Alright, let's talk about code enforcement. Matt, you wanna set it up?
Yeah, I've got our chief code enforcement guest, Gasso Lopez, he's walking in the building just on time. And what, what the idea with this was, we, he's got some new staff there, and Mark is here, and then they've got a plan they've put forth, thinking ahead with the new year, with code enforcement, his team, and, but I also thought it would be a good idea for them to listen to you, with your district concerns, and, and, and conjunction with Mark's plan, and just to do a little Q and A, but mostly listening session for the new staff here. So, Mark, if you're ready, let you proceed.
Good.
Hey, Mark.
I have a very short slide presentation, and like Matt said, really here to, to listen to you, you've got short concerns, you're gonna take all that in, and use that to develop a-
Work plan for code enforcement, as well as the, the planning side of the house as well, so. So anyhow, I got a brief breakdown of the department. We're essentially three divisions, as you well know. So we got a planning division, and then we got the MTP, uh, uh, NPO, excuse me, and then the enforcement division, which is made up of the administrator and, and three other members of, of his team. Okay, so you got, you got, you got myself there, and then you've got Gasso Lopez, he is the veteran on the team, been with us for many years. He has recently been promoted to administrator, so we're, we're happy for him. We've got a couple new faces, we've got, we've got, Nicole Perry, and then also we've got Wilton Perez, he's, 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 those are the two of his members. And then, don't forget, we got Michael Black, too. He's a part-time employee, and he is primarily responsible for litter pickup, roadside litter pickup, so he does a wonderful job for us. Got a few, few numbers from last year. They've looked at over two, a hundred, well, actually, we, we did, as I thought we should do last year, and I mentioned to you last year, that we should actually inventory the structures. So code enforcement team did do that, we went citywide, they found approximately two hundred and twenty structures that could be, is considered dilapidated, and could be a candidate for removal. So that's a lot, but, you know, probably a manageable number there, so. Unsightly lots, they wrote up, wrote up over two hundred and twenty-seven of those, four hundred and fifty overgrown lots, thirty, they wrote thirty ordered repairs, detained thirty vehicles, and Michael picked up one thousand seven hundred and fifty-two bags of trash, which equates to approximately thirteen tons of garbage. For a part-time employee, so that's pretty good. Some of the, some of the duties they do, they identify, turn, enforcing public nuisances, overgrown grass, vegetation, litter, trash, construction debris, remove abandoned vehicles with the nuisance car ordinance, illicit discharge of pollutants, a removal of temporary portable signs, zoning code enforcement, dumpster screening, landscaping, sign ordinances, and the like. So typical stuff, but, but it's a wide, and it comes in lists of items that they're, they're constantly monitoring and paying attention to. When it comes to blight, we have quite a few tools in our toolbox, which includes minimum housing code, our order to repair code, nuisance ordinances, we've got the junk, abandoned nuisance vehicle ordinance, we have unsightly lot standards, we have also federal and state programs to include, NC buyout, we have conservation districts on the books, and we also have the, an advantage that we have some infill development occurring in these neighborhoods, which currently, I've been through most of the neighborhoods in the city, and I have noticed that a lot of the, the lots that, or some of the lots that were cleared in years past, through the city going in and demoing the structures, those properties now are being, houses are being constructed on some of those properties. Also, there is a lot of activity in the neighborhoods with contractors coming in, buying up the houses, fixing them up, and, and possibly flipping them. So there's that. Also, not included here, we also have a, a good police force, and also economic development and, and building inspections. All these folks are, are, all these, these, the, the, our departments, and our tools that we have in our toolbox can all be used, and have been used in the past for combating blight. We're currently developing, I am currently developing a, a code enforcement, haven't quite got a name for it yet, but a code enforcement, uh, just a manual for describing how certain activities throughout their day should be conducted. One of them, this is just a snitbit of, of that document, the whole thing is not quite ready for prime time yet, but I wanted to share with you a couple items that, that could be considered for this document. This is really, goes under the caseload management, and essentially what it does is it's just setting a, a priority for cases, and really, this particular portion of the document here is really just describing the severity of cases, in which cases to, you know, to, to focus on when, when they arise. So the first being violations that present, that represent or present an imminent threat to the public life and health and safety. Obviously, those are the most severe violations, which impact rivers, streams, floodplains, wetlands, landscape buffers, solid waste code enforcement violations, and last, land use violations. Part of the deployment of the forces that we have, we were considering going to a enforcement zone type plan, which each zone will have, we have three enforcement officers, we'll have three zones, each officer will have their own particular zone, and it will allow people to directly contact the enforcement officer whose, whose case would, would be in their, their zone. So, I think that plan, it will be effective, I think it'll be more efficient, and the upside is, they'll be cross-training, all these zoning enforcement officers will have the same skill set, they'll all deal with all similar type zoning violations, they'll also be required to support one another, and, and allow for backup, backup one, each other, in, in, in a way that will be safe and efficient. We also have a new compliance, housing compliance officer. Oops. Taj is, is our new housing enforcement officer. Unfortunately, he's not able to be here today, he wasn't feeling well. But obviously, the tools in his toolbox include minimum housing, ordered repair, he's got zoning code- Blight Task, Blight Task Force, to really study the problem, and to come up with other ways to, and other approaches to the problem, and, and in the process create opportunity. We, I've, I've talked in the past about possibly creating like overlay districts, that would have reduced setback standards, possibly some form of reduced parking standards, that would encourage development in these areas that, that are suffering the worst from blight. So, not only would we remove the, the rotten decay, we would find a, create a way for new development to take its place, and also to create opportunity for redevelopment of existing structures that can't be salvaged. So, that's really all I have. I really would like to hear from you, tell me what your ideas, what your thoughts are. I, I will say, let me just, before I do that, I would say, we do have some needs. We've got a really good team in place. Unfortunately, we have, now we have five code enforcement folks, we have four vehicles for them, we have five other planning employees, and we have one vehicle for them. So, there's a need there for additional vehicles. And, so I would like to see that, get, have that need filled this year, if possible.
But those have been submitted in your CIP, correct?
I think so, yes. Yes, ma'am?
Could you talk to me about, you, you had a map up there, saying that you had code enforcement officers, or, for each district? Have you identified, I, I know you gave a name, but what have you done with that structure? How have you structured that? Could you talk to me a little bit about that?
Yeah, so, so, there, essentially, these zones are, are, are created using the, the district, voting district lines. So in this case, we're calling enforcement zone one, is a combination of zoning, voting district one and voting district three. And then enforcement zone two is comprised of, I believe-
Five and six.
District two and- District four. And then the zone, enforcement zone three is comprised of the other two voting districts. So, so each district will, in this scheme, will, will be responsible for two particular, two, two separate zoning, excuse me, voting districts. Does that make sense? So essentially, two council members will have one, one code enforcement that they can go directly to.
I understand what you're saying now, since we have so many zones, so many districts.
Yeah, it's just a logical way of breaking it down.
You know, that we have to burn, the fire and, and the police station is in a different zone, my district one is in a different zone, is the chief here? It's, it's in a different zone, you know, so we have all these zones and stuff.
And this is really-
And I'm not saying that we have to memorize them, but it would be good so that we could familiarize ourselves with, you know, what we're doing.
Okay. This is really just kind of an internal kind of way of organizing the force, and deploying it in a logical manner. Really, you just pick up the phone, give somebody a call, and we'll, you don't even have to worry about it, it'll be seamless for you.
Councilman Taylor, Heather?
Okay, so, question, while we're talking, I have a couple of questions, but this one right here. Is there a way that you can get all of us on council a list of each zone, who the enforcement officer is, and which area it handles? So that way, we'll have it in case someone contacts us, and we can direct, put them in the right direction, or if we have a need for one of our constituents, we'll, we'll know that. And then the second thing is, where are we at with getting back to having a minimum housing list for the public? Listing all the homes that are on minimum housing, and which stage they're in? I get a lot of requests for that, because we used to have that, that we could give out, and then people, you know, would know what is where.
Okay, so yeah, so we're maintaining a, a master database of all the blighted properties, and those that are currently in a process leading towards, you know, condemnation and removal of the structure.
Right.
So that, that is public information, and is available, and we'll be glad to-
Right, but what I'm saying is, years ago, there was an actual list, people could go to the planning department and pick that up, and it, it would list stage one, stage two, stage three, and then like the final stage. And it was really helpful to people, especially investors, who wanted to invest in these properties. I, I just think that that's something that I hear a lot, that people are requesting, and that I've asked for before, so where are we at? Can you get us that?
I, I would not have a problem entertaining that, providing, of course, council, you know, legal councils is, is fine with that.
Right, and I'm sure that if somewhere in the planning department, there should be one, the, you know, an example for you, because it was a great, great list, it was however many pages there were at the time, and maybe you could just get that, and-
Do you think, just have it available to those that may want it, or maybe posted?
I think that it just needs to be, it needs to be available to the public, yes.
I, I'm confident we can get that done in, in short order.
We used to have one, and it was great.
If we had a model we can use, we'll make it a top priority.
Okay. And then my last question is, I think I talked to you about this the other day, but I would really like to see us have some kind of process or communication with the register of deeds office, so that way, if a house is purchased whilst in the condemnation process, that they will know to, maybe, maybe we can work hand in hand, so they can call us, so we won't be going forward condemning someone's home that just purchased it and didn't know.
Yeah, and that's, that's a, a problem with the process, and it's, you know, it's gonna be a hard one to solve, because any time, say, a piece of property's condemned, say my property's condemned, I can turn around and sell it to somebody the next day, and it's no longer my problem. But for code enforcement, now it's, the process starts over. So we can get so many months into this process, and then the property changes hands, then, then, yeah, then essentially we're starting all over.
But that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that we need to have some kind of communication with our register of deeds office. So if someone does buy a property that's in, in that stage, or being, you know, that code enforcement is working on, that it immediately sends a red flag, maybe? And then that way, you, you know, we can be notified-
Sorry, I know what she's asking for. She's saying, having a list there with the register of deeds office of property that we're in the process of condemning somewhere, and if it's sold, that they would notify us somehow.
Right, we, we really need to have that.
We could, we could reach out to them to see if they're capable, have the capability of reporting to us when that occurs, but sometimes I question whether they're really, you know, are able to even know, you know, one person.
There's, there's two, may I rephrase, if you don't mind?
Right, I just, yes.
Go ahead, please, go.
Well, I was just saying, I, I just don't think there's, I think that's something that we need to do, not may, or, or can, or might. I, I just think that we can, because what about if I, my home is in that process, and then I don't wanna deal with it anymore, so I just sell it to Chris? And then Chris buys a house, and he doesn't know, and then the next thing I know, I have a wrecking ball at my, at, where at his new house, ready to tear it down, you know, that's an issue, and that's a liability for the city.
Absolutely, yeah, well, it's, it's a challenge for code enforcement, really, so-
Right, so I think-
Anything we could do to, to make sure that we're, we have the most accurate, and most, and the freshest data available, essentially. Because we really have a hard time tracking when properties are bought and sold.
To that point, if a, those watching at home, in a typical real estate transaction, you're gonna have a closing attorney, you're gonna have a mortgage, and you're gonna have title insurance, that's going to force an attorney to go and look, is this in a condemnation list, is it in a floodplain, is it, is it in a DOT development zone? You're gonna look at all these different things. A lot of the properties that we're talking about right now kinda fly under the radar, and in some cases, transact on napkins, and sometimes those napkins are handed over to the register of deeds, have seen it, literally on a napkin, and, and other times, they don't. And so, if a- And so, if a, by law, if we're on, if say condemnation is a three-stage process, I'm oversimplifying, we're on stage two, and that property transacts, in a mature way or a napkin way, by law, that process resets. But if it's not being done in a way that goes through the typical title insurance, mortgage, closing attorney process, our code enforcement officer may not know, and we may have contracted with someone to show up on a Wednesday, and we don't find out it's transacted until we get there, and the new owner says, no, I bought it, see, here's my napkin. And so, you end up with a lot of funky things, and I do think that the register of deeds would, would absolutely help, if we were able to, even if it's using the database that you referenced earlier, this, the master database of all the properties that are currently in the process somewhere, I think, without realizing, that is the thing that we've been asking for. So, we gotta, we gotta figure that out, because I think the register of deeds office would help us with that.
I agree, I think we can set up a meeting with them, and Mark and staff, and I'll be happy to attend that meeting, make sure that we can get something going.
Was that a fair restatement of-
Yes, I just am trying to keep us as a city from getting sued, because we tear someone's house down, and I just want to make sure that we have a clear process, you know, and that helps everyone, if we have a streamlined process, then that's helping everyone do their job.
Got it. We'll set up a meeting with them.
Suggestion, is it possible that whenever condemnation process starts, that some, through conversation with register of deeds, that the registers office would let us as a city notify them, this property is in condemnation, or has begun that, so maybe they can flag that property in their system? I mean, that might be a way to, when you talk to the register of deeds, I'm sure that their, the new register of deeds would be happy to work with us.
Yeah, I think those things are all, I think we just have to set that meeting up, get on the same page with them, and work on it together. You're absolutely right, we need to have those communications, but we're gonna have to depend on them, and they're gonna have to depend on us, so it'll be a team effort. We'll set the meeting up, and we'll determine a protocol, and we'll report back to you on what that looks like.
Yep, because even if we have that minimum housing list with the different stages, and they have a copy, you know, that-
Yeah, yeah, there's some things we can do, I think, right away, once we have that meeting, then we can implement it, and we'll report back with you on the decisions made, I'll just ask that Mark set up that meeting as soon as possible, and we'll go from there.
I have a question.
Other question, yes?
Just to switch gears real quick, Mark, and this is really for your officers, last term, or last council, we decided to change the timeline that a property owner had to repair their property, before we moved to the next step. Do you think it is time for council to revisit that timeline, to lessen that timeline? Because from what I understand, somebody could go to their house, put a nail in a board, and that process kind of starts all over again, or it stalls out, so people are really using that to their advantage. So, do you think it's time for us to revisit that decision, and lessen that timeline, to see if we can move the process along a lot faster?
Are you referring to like the condemnation, or minimum housing, or referring to ordered repair, because there are a couple different methods that we use?
Can I, do you mind if I, I spoke to your officers about it? Do y'all remember what I was saying about the, whatever that code is, like when you're getting ready to not necessarily condemn, we weren't talking about condemning, I guess-
You were talking about ordered repair, that the time, that the time is different?
If you could go, here, Gaston, you can speak. Any microphone you see?
The question was about like ordered repair, that one is limited more than minimum housing. So, like you were saying, a lot of people, we send the notice, and once we send the first notice, they go ahead and put boards, or something that makes it, okay, here, we're working. So, if that changes, that will help us a lot, and limit the time, especially when it comes to minimum housing, because minimum housing is such a long process, that a lot of people get aggravated, why the stuff is not getting done quick, and it's not that we don't want to do it quick, but we have to do the due process, because we have to, we work for the city, even though we work for the, everybody out there, but we have to follow the law. So, if we could work on a time limit, that would help us more, with both, ordered repair and minimum housing.
Okay, so, can both of those, both of those, ordered repair and a minimum housing, does council control that timeline?
Minimum housing, maybe, building, maybe based on state building code, I will look into that, but to make sure, so that we're not, you know, messing around with something we probably shouldn't be, but it's a 30-day, we're required to send three letters, essentially, so we send the first letter, a month later, we send the second letter, and then we send a, okay, we're, we meet at this time, we're gonna, we're gonna take your structure down, and then once we do that, then we're, we're, you know, then we move forward to bring it to council, to actually have it condemned and removed.
Minimum housing is heavily regulated, because the state is, the law is very geared towards keeping someone in their home, and the city not being able to arbitrarily take someone's property.
Right, and there's appeals processes too, that we have to-
You got some options on nuisance payment, to your voice.
So, kind of, thank you for the clarity. To follow up, whichever one that we changed, and I don't know if you guys remember that, but whichever, whichever one we changed, I'm hearing out loud, that it would be beneficial for us to go back and visit that timeline, it may be helpful for our officers, and also helpful for the community to go ahead and do something.
Absolutely, we'll look into that, yeah.
I appreciate that.
Ms. Taylor?
Oh, so, it had to have been ordered to repair, right, because we, oh, sorry, it had to have been ordered to repair, because we had moved away from minimum housing for a while, is that correct?
No, it's the other way around.
It's the other way around?
We adopted a minimum housing code, we had been using ordered to repair, so that we could expedite it.
That's what I mean, it had to have been ordered to repair that they changed.
I'm thinking ordered to repair as well.
It had to have been ordered to repair that they changed, right? Because we had stepped away from minimum housing, and we're doing mostly ordered to repair, is that right?
Well, I would defer to Gaston on that one, because he does it every day, but I know we had an ordered to repair program in place, and then we adopted a minimum housing code, so that we could quick, more quickly condemn property, and we do have to follow statutes.
That's not what I'm asking, no, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, far as what councilwoman Matthews is saying, and mayor Protem said she remembers, I wasn't on council when that was done, so it had to have been ordered to repair.
That program, he was talking about their boarding of the windows, is the ordered to repair.
Okay, so, so-
Am I mistaken in that, Gaston, is that correct?
The one, when you were talking about the boarding of the windows, where are you talking about under ordered to repair?
That's a catch.
Ordered to repair was established in 2020, Jennifer was with us, and it really helped
a lot, because it stopped a lot of structures from going down, and a lot of people, they wouldn't, a lot of people that leave that Goldsboro, they own this property, they have no clue they own it, so that's what I found out, that it, oh, I didn't know I owned this property, so they go ahead and sell it, or they go ahead and start working on it. So, that ordered to repair really helps a lot.
Right, so, but what I was saying was, when councilwoman Matthews was asking, can we revise the ordinate, or the timeline, I was saying, it had to have been ordered to repair, because we weren't using minimum housing until just recently, right?
That's right.
Okay, that's what I was just trying to say, okay. So, but I would agree that we need to revise that.
I do too.
Would it, would it be safe to say that, I mean, obviously, this council's wanting to move the needle in that regard, would it be proper to say, you guys look at what your set of ordinance, or your ordinance, or what your rules are, that we have the ability to affect, and then come back to us and say, this is what our suggestion is on an update, so we can fix some of that stuff?
I think our ordinance is in pretty good shape, I mean, minimum housing, you know, leading towards condemnation of rural structure, I mean, that, you know, we need to refine the internal, you know, process, and get good at it, but, you know, we could, at some point, we're gonna be able to take this thing down anywhere from three to six months, which is incredibly quick, when you start talking about moving in and taking somebody's house down, that's moving fast. Ordered to repair is a longer process, that allows, that gives people time to, you know, make repairs, it's not necessarily leading towards, you know, condemnation. I think we're good, it's just, you know, we just gotta get better.
Mr. Hammer, I think what the council and I are trying to say is that we have a consensus that we would like to look at that timeline and change it.
Particularly with, with ordered to repair.
Yes, correct.
Okay, this is on another note, first of all, I would like to thank, I went out with code enforcement last year, and this year recently, and I want to thank you guys, I enjoyed myself, I learned a lot, but I want to talk about, when does a resident or residence receive notification that their street was renamed, or named, and Mr. Lopez, could you come up to the mic and talk about the situation I've been trying to work with on Babel Street? Can you, can you share that information, so that you could-
I'm not aware of the situation, talk to me.
Don't start.
When we were writing together the other day, there was a street, there was a question, but what I found out also today, that the street, the way it is in one, can I say, in one part of GIS, it shows that it's from Fiddler Trail into the gentleman's house, but on the other side, it shows George Street Extension.
Right, because-
So, yeah, so that's a GIS issue.
Right, because back in the day, years ago, okay, we're talking about Fiddler Trail, there is a resident that lives there, and he was under the impression that he did not have the right of way, he was really concerned that if the people that lived beside him on Fiddler Trail would say that he could no longer use that road, then he wouldn't be able to get to his house, and so he was very concerned about that. Then when we went out, we saw, we found out that on the map that Mr. Lopez had, we found out that it had been changed to Babel Street. Now, back in the day, before I was on the council, it was my understanding that that Babel Street that y'all have named it, and he didn't know it was named Babel Street, because it was Parker's Church Road, it was supposed to extend all the way out to Chestnut, am I correct? What, what street is this supposed to go to?
It extends out from, it's like a curve.
Right, and so that never, that never happened, and from, and after speaking to the previous city manager, that is not going to happen. But my question is, this man, and he's older, but he needs to know and understand that no one can keep him from getting to his house, he needs to know when the resident, when a residence notified of any change.
Well, you know, I don't know all the, probably all the facts of this, but I will say, that these situations tend to be kind of messy, and occur over decades, and sometimes the truth is lost, and a new truth is understood, but I will say this, a formal street name change does require notification of all just property owners, okay? And also, when it comes to the legal access, once a, and this is really an attorney question, but once you have established legal access to a piece of land, and you maintain it for years, on years, at some point, then it is, you know, part of the deed, and you maintain that right to travel through someone else's land to get yours, it just runs, you know, it's, I forget the exact term for it, but-
Ease by a stop.
Easement by a stop. Yes, so, so they can't just cut you off from, from your property, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't want to be the one standing between us and going home, but a couple more things, I am super excited about this zone, because I represent this area down here, and once we pass the golf course, it looks almost like a third world country. I have seen grass grow taller than stop signs, and I know a lot of that had to do with us just being understaffed, and I get all of that, so I'm looking forward to the zones, and actually having our own officer that can really cater to the needs that we need here in district four. The other thing, going back to code enforcement as a whole, the properties that are owned by the county and the city are usually maintained by the city solely, and when I say maintained, I mean like cutting the grass, which means they, our lawnmowers, is our staff, so I would like for us to see if we can talk to the county, and see if they were sharing some of that expense, or at least in some of the effort, especially when it speaks to those properties that we, that we own together, I think it's only fair, we should foot that whole bill if we're sharing some of those properties.
Okay, was there another one? Okay.
Okay, I have another issue, which I don't know where it falls into, but I'm gonna go ahead on and share it. The other side of Center Street, and I want to thank Public Works, because when I did call them, to ask them to take care of the grass cutting, because it's, you know, we got this beautiful Center Street down here, it's beautiful, and then when you go to the other side of Center Street-